Everyone, welcome to the Monday, October 23rd, meeting of the Rolling Hills City Council. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Here.
Mayor Protam Mersch.
Here.
And Mayor Wilson.
Here. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilman Piper, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice to hear a full house say that, thank you. Okay, next item is presentation proclamation, I believe we have none.
You have none.
Okay. Prove the order of the agenda, I'd like to make one change, I would like to move item 13 to come right after item nine. There's any objections to that?
13A?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, that'll be the order, anybody else have a change they'd like to request? Okay. We'll move on to blue folder items, there is an item in the blue folder, it's under commission items.
Correct.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Just to see if it can file.
Second.
Please say aye. Aye. Next is public comment on non-agenda items. Fred?
Alfred Visco, 15th century, couple items, back in June 26th, a contract was approved with SiteLogic for $28,500 to do the evaluation, come up with options concerning the solar panels and the battery backup. I don't know what's happened to that, I don't know whether they're moving along on that, when they're supposed to submit a report, or at least a preliminary report, it's kind of fallen through the cracks. And on another item on that, of course, we don't have any power backup for the city, as far as I know. And do we have in place a plan in case we do need that power backup before we can implement the solar panels and the solar batteries? Or the backup, in other words, have somebody online lined up to bring in emergency power if the city needs it. The second item is the FEMA grant money, the $1 million. It's again fallen through the black hole, I know FEMA is very busy with Maui and other issues. This should be on the agenda every month. And I know staff has been working on it and trying to get them to respond. I think you need to go up the food chain, I think the city council needs to get involved, through the mayor perhaps, and maybe send a little letter off, under the mayor's signature saying, hey, well guys, what the heck's going on here? And then the third item was the signs at the Crest Road East Gate, the traffic committee, we discussed that back in September, I believe. And I think they punted it back to the city council, so I'd like to see that signage. If it's not going to be done, say it's not going to be done, if it's going to be done, let's get it done. And just remind everybody that's changing the signage from, you know, no exit to emergency exit only when flashing light or something equivalent. So, those are the items, thank you so much.
Thank you. David? Have a quick update on the first two items?
Yes, actually, with regard to the solar project, that will be on your agenda, your next agenda. They're ready to come forward with the final cost parameters and the scope, and you'll be reviewing that and giving us direction to proceed or not.
Thank you.
And with the other...
The FEMA grant Mr. Visco is referring to, it's still the same scenario, although FEMA did just reach out to us last week with a precursor email requesting some information, but still no numbers yet, and Phase II approval.
The third item, we, the traffic commission decided not to act on that as far as changing the signage because it's a bigger project. It's not just simple changing signs and that everything will be fine, it's going to be developed more, I'm trying to remember, the last traffic commission? Who was there? Besides me?
Don Reeder?
Yeah. Our traffic engineer was there, Vanessa, she kind of recommended that they remain as is, maybe had a couple more suggestions, but...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Vanessa was there for, our traffic commissioner, she was there at the meeting, and she had recommended that there be no change to that, to the signs on Crest Road East.
But I think we recognize it was a bigger issue than just changing signs, we were going to look at that in a more holistic manner with the association. Because it was, there were some questions about, just, again, the holistic approach to that area back there, so. Those are the updates on those items, thank you. Any other non-agenda public comment? Seeing none? Sure, could, we have a lot more visitors than usual, just out of curiosity, what you might be here for? If there's a specific agenda item, they're all your people? Well, I already had that item moved up, so, okay. That takes us to the, yes, consent calendar, thank you. Is there a motion regarding consent?
Consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nothing excluded, now it brings us to item 13.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, 13A. Tonight I have the privilege of reporting on this item, and that is the consideration of the appointment of Ms. Karina Banalis to the position of city manager effective November 13th, 2023. As everyone up here on the dais is aware, previous city manager Elaine Jang's last day was July 7th, 2023. The city council commenced its recruitment and search for a new permanent city manager prior to that date, and in the interim appointed David Reddy to my right to serve as the interim city manager until a permanent city manager was found. After an exhaustive and complete search, before you tonight is the resolution appointing Ms. Banalis to the role of city manager and approving the attached employment agreement to the resolution. This is the result of discussions and direction from the city council during closed session. Ms. Banalis currently serves as the deputy city manager for the city of Rancho Palos Verdes, a position she has held for over three years. Ms. Banalis' career in public service spans nearly 14 years, and at that time she has demonstrated competency, leadership, and public stewardship. Since 2015, she has been employed by cities on the Palos Verdes Peninsula and has developed a strong reputation and relationships with the pertinent agencies and individuals that will be a valuable asset should she be appointed her, the role as city manager. Ms. Banalis is a graduate of the University of Hawaii at Manoa with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and holds a Master's of Public Administration from the University of Laverne. While the terms of the contract are more completely posited in the agreement itself, as well as the staff report, the basics are a three-year term, a base salary of $187,500, a $300 monthly car allowance, and a $100 cellphone plan reimbursement. She will receive medical and other insurance as provided to other city employees and a deferred compensation plan in the amount of a percentage of base salary determined on the years of service. So in conclusion, the item before the city council is the adoption of Resolution Number 1350, appointing Ms. Banalis to the position of city manager and approving the employment agreement attached to the resolution as Exhibit A. Ms. Banalis, and it appears, family and friends are all here tonight. And so if the city council does not have any questions for me, I think it'd be advisable to invite Ms. Banalis up to say a few words prior to opening up to public comment. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Of course, thank you. Karina, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Honorable Wilson, Mayor Wilson, Mayor Protam Mersch, and members of the city council. Thank you so much for this evening and this opportunity to serve the amazing community of the city of Rolling Hills as your next city manager, as described in the staff report presented by city attorney Donigan, that I do have experience within the peninsula, and I do believe that that will assist me and be enabled to carry forth the policy administration that we still deserve here at the community. So, again, thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you and with city staff.
Before you, is there any questions for the councilmembers?
Are you sure?
You know, Mayor Protam, I've already said yes to the dress, so I'm going to appear here on November 13th, ready to work. Thank you.
Is there any questions of the council from city attorney Donigan? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment, would anybody like to speak on this item? Back to council, any discussion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 1350, appointing Karina Banyanes to the position of city manager effective November 13th and approve the employment agreement that is attached as Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I have one question, this is going to be a single motion, appointing the city manager in the contract, oh, okay.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I said aye.
The motion carries, congratulations.
For one.
I'll take my family with me.
Just a moment to clear the chamber.
See you on the 13th.
Okay, so we're going to go back to...
Come 10.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us back to 10A, which is consideration to receive and file Resolution Number 2023-11 from the Planning Commission granting approval of zoning case number 22-51 for a site plan review to construct a new single-family residence with a basement attached garage, five-foot-high retaining walls, non-exempt grading and related improvements, variances to construct, swimming pools, spa in the front yard, retaining walls exceeding an average of two feet, six inches in height, retaining walls in the front yard, and trail, I'm sorry, and four, non-exempt, and trail, Rolling Hills... I'm sorry, I can't find the line, at four, number four, non-exempt grading export on a property located at Fort Poppy Trail, Rolling Hills, California. Alright, we have a staff report?
Yes, I'll give the staff report, Mayor Wilson, members of the city council. The item before you is a receiving and filing item from the Planning Commission. It's on Fort Poppy Trail Road, zoning case number 22-51, for a site plan review and a variance. The location of Fort Poppy Trail is shown right there, in kind of the center of the city. And the property is Zoned RAS 2, it has a net lot area of about 6.37 acres. It's an irregularly shaped lot, there's a decent driveway that leads to the stable pad that partially goes off-site. The property owner is Andy Arvidson, applicant is Dan Bolton from Bolton Engineering, and the architect is Chris Gunderson. The Planning Commission held public hearings on March 21st, July 18th, August 15th, and September 12th. And at the last meeting, the Planning Commission approved the project, adopting the resolution. Also, the traffic commission made a recommendation to approve the driveway apron, widening of the driveway on March 23rd. A little bit of background, at the first meeting of the Planning Commission, on March 21st, they recommended that the applicant reduce the amount of grading, which is about 42,000 cubic yards at the time, and develop the barn pad, which is located at the top of the property. At the meeting of July 18th, the Planning Commission directed applicant to continue working with the neighbors to develop the barn pad. And during that time, the applicant was able to meet with the neighbors, but they were not able to come to an agreement. So the owner decided to move forward with the original plan, which was to develop the home on the center of the property. On August 15th, the applicant requested more time, continuance, to be able to revise the plans to reduce the amount of grading. The revised project that was approved by the Planning Commission is still for the construction of a new 7,290-square-foot single-family residence, which includes a basement attached garage, some covered porches, and an attached trellis. They decided to reduce the amount of grading by eliminating the accessory dwelling unit next to the pad. It does include a swimming pool, pool equipment, and other improvements. The grading was reduced from about 42,000 cubic yards down to about 25,000 cubic yards. For the most part, it was, most of it was balanced on-site, they are, they would have to export about 6,900 cubic yards of dirt. Of that, about 3,700 cubic yards is non-exempt. So that's not included, including the basement and swimming pool, which is exempt from the grading, the export. This is the original site plan, Poppy Trail is located at the bottom right there, which kind of curves around. What the traffic commission looked at was widening this area right over there, driveway apron. The driveway would be widened from about 10 feet up to 20 feet. And what they're proposing is that the new driveway would come off, would use the existing driveway and curve off of that area onto the new building pad located in the center of the property. The green line there shows the limit of grading proposed under the original site plan. And the existing barn is located at the very top. To access that, you'd use the driveway that actually goes off-site onto neighboring properties and then comes back on-site for the barn. The applicant was able to revise the site plan by removing the accessory dwelling unit and making some tweaks to the site plan, the pad location. In terms of the amount of grading, that's shown there in the red, and in comparison to the, what was originally proposed for grading, that's shown there in the green. This shows the original grading plan. So the limit of grading is shown there, outlined there, the area of cut is shown in red, the area of fill where the dirt would be moving to is shown in blue. In comparison, the revised grading plan is shown here, again, the cut is in red, the fill is in blue. They were able to do that by eliminating the accessory dwelling unit there and making some changes to the pad location, including providing a double retaining wall along the driveway. The area there in green shows the existing limits of grading under the original plan. Again, they were able to reduce the amount of grading from about 42,000 cubic yards to around 25,000 cubic yards. This just shows some comparisons with the other projects of what they're proposing. And this shows some sections the Planning Commission considered, showing the location of the proposed building pad in comparison with the natural grade. This is the artist's rendering, the architect's rendering of the proposed residence. Some comparisons into the floor plan, showing what the original floor plan looks like, and you'll see from the garage there, it gets shifted just slightly in order to reduce the size of the pad. And a couple of photos of the proposed project, this view is from Poppy Trail. The proposed residence is located there at the top. And this is from the barn pad located at the top of the property, looking down towards the proposed residence. Again, the applicant did consider developing on the barn pad at the very top, they consulted with the fire department, they were able to make that part work, however, when they checked with the geology, their geologist indicated that off-site remediation was needed on the upslope area. The applicant had reached out to the neighbors, but were not able to come to an agreement about doing the remediation off-site. This shows that proposal for the barn pad location. The existing driveway is located in that area there, it actually goes off the site, the property lines are shown there, yellow or orange. So the driveway would actually go off-site and come back onto the property. The applicant would have to develop that barn pad location and widen out that pad area. What made this stall is that area located there in the red, that's the remediation area that was, would be needed if they were able, if they wanted to develop that barn pad. In terms of the project, the Planning Commission considered the site plan review, the requirement for, it's required for the new residents and the pertinent structures for non-exempt grading and also for retaining walls, maximum five feet with an average height, not to exceed two and a half. There are four variance requests with the project, one for the swimming pool and spa located in the front yard, a variance for retaining walls that are five feet high, exceeding the average height of two and a half feet, retaining walls located in the front yard, and also for non-exempt grading export. We were able to notice the project in the daily breeze, three separate times. Notices were also mailed to owners within a thousand feet of the property, and we did receive correspondences from residences. They also participated in the public hearings, and the correspondences are included in the staff report as attachments. The Planning Commission found the project was categorically exempt through the California Environmental Quality Act. The actions, again, were that traffic commission recommended approval of the driveway apron and widening. And the Planning Commission was able to adopt Resolution Number 2023, sorry, 2023-11, approving the proposed project, and that resolution is included in the staff report. Our recommendation is that the city council receive and file the Planning Commission's decision. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is there questions for John, for the council?
First off on that, it was a nice presentation, thank you very much. I was under the impression that export is allowed, not import, I didn't know why that required a variance, because I know we moved in the past to allow export of dirt.
Export of dirt for the basement and the swimming pool are exempt.
I think, I thought that all export now was exempt, and did not require variance.
That's, well, not my understanding, my understanding is that it's only for basement and swimming pool.
Because we did pass something a few years ago to that extent, and I, maybe it was a limit, but I did not think it was a limit. I don't have a problem with the export, I just didn't think they needed variance for that.
Well, I guess to stay on the safe side, we included that as a variance, to my understanding, again, only the basement portion and the swimming pools are exempt.
That was it.
Okay, and I do have two quick clarifications on page four of the staff report. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. It says that an adequate pathway is proposed to safely accommodate pedestrians from the residence to the accessory dwelling unit? I am correct, aren't I, that the ADU has been taken off of this?
Yes.
The other thing relating to ADUs, they can take the ADU off this to get compliance, or approval, if that's what is determined to happen. But they can then come back later and put an ADU where we didn't, where they took it away to get the approval, and we wouldn't have any way to stop it.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to get that out there for everybody.
Is that the two questions?
That's my questions for him, yes.
Okay. So, I've got a question, and this is about consistency with other projects. And I understand that this project is categorically exempt because it's a residential unit, I mean, that's the primary reason, right? But I don't, I'm trying to understand the proximity to the prior slide area on Poppy Trail? Is it an adjacent property, or a budding property?
So my understanding is, I guess there was a lot line adjustment that happened, occurred maybe a number of years back, and that sort of helped kind of separate this property from that landslide property. So it is in that location, but my understanding is it's not on this site here.
Okay, I understand that. So, I'm trying, again, I'm trying, I'm looking for consistency, with the Shen project, the 77 Portuguese bin, that did require a CEQA review. And what conditions were different from that one to this one that didn't require a CEQA review?
Well, the Shen residence is located in the flying triangle, at least actually the portion of it, it's the driveway portion actually located in the flying triangle area. And that's what, that was what triggered the mitigated net of declaration for that project.
So the project itself, the development was outside the slide, the designated slide limits at least, although the approach to it was within the slide. So that's the difference, why that project required this environmental review, and this one doesn't, because it's not, I guess the limits are not within an area that's been identified as a slide?
That's correct, yes.
Correct, and Mr. Mayor, if I may add, so the, and unfortunately, under the, I don't want to get too deep into it, the CEQA realm, because what you're saying is, hey, it's just the, you know, the driveway, right, as compared to the residence, but CEQA doesn't really allow for that type of bifurcation. So we couldn't have, you know, just done CEQA now, you know, bifurcate the CEQA analysis and say, well, we're just going to look at this small driveway, because that's the one that's in the landslide zone, and then leave this other one alone and just rely upon the exemption, you have to look at the project as a whole. So I hope that, I've attempted to kind of clarify and say, that's kind of why, once you trigger that potential exception to the CEQA exemption, the whole project is now at issue as compared to just that small component.
Okay, but you, did you even go through the CEQA review process with this project?
We did discuss CEQA, actually, we discussed it also with our attorney for the Planning Commission. And for other projects, we'd give them categorically exempt, there are single-family residences being proposed on a single-family, on a, you know, single-family lot. In this case, we understood that there was a landslide in the area, however, it didn't occur on this property. And so this area, you know, from what I understand, is, you know, I guess, developable. And also, my understanding is, the engineer that they hired to review the site, the geologist, actually worked on the landslide portion also, so you have geologists dealing with both sites.
And then just something to add, Mr. Mayor, if I can, so, I understand when it says there, it's, you know, CEQA exemption, that doesn't mean that we didn't pay attention to CEQA, that doesn't mean we didn't review CEQA.
Well, that's what I'm asking, did you go through the 20-question checklist?
Well, no, so that's, basically, the vernacular gets a bit confusing here, so what we have is categorical exemptions. That is the class three that Mr. Signo has discussed. And then what the CEQA regulations say is, we now have exceptions to the exemption. And so I believe, I forget the name of the public commenter who may have raised those very concerns about whether or not an exception to the exemption applies. So you answered your question, no, when, typically, when there's a CEQA exemption, you do not do that initial study, you do not do that checklist. That is consistent with, I believe, every other, you know, single-family residence that we've done in the past. With that being said, I will say, you five are the ultimate city decision-makers. If you guys have concerns, or questions, or issues with the CEQA, that is entirely your purview. As Mr. Signo said, reach out to my office, I reach out to CEQA folks in my office, and we, once again, stand behind what's in the staff report, however, you guys are the ultimate decision-makers, so if you have concerns or questions, now is, of course, the time to bring them up.
Well, I understand your comment about it's not, the project is not within the bound, it's not within the former slide. I mean, we call it a former slide, we're seeing a little bit of slide activity in the peninsula these days, so some unexpected, some continuing. It just concerns me that there was a landslide, and this project is proximate to that landslide, and because of the lot line, however it's drawn, it doesn't require the CEQA review. But just knowing that it was there, this is before I was on council, so I didn't have to deal with it personally, but I know that was quite a big issue for the city, and I would just be concerned that because the, you know, the review wasn't done, that, and if something bad happens in the future, where it's going to leave us.
Yeah, this is actually, isn't the only residence being proposed for that location, there was another development at Zero Poppy Trail, actually, which is developed, built, which, my understanding, I guess that's actually closer to the landslide area. And there was another one that was approved but not currently built, I think they were going through the permitting process.
And just one more quick thing to add, Mr. Mayor, I totally hear you and understand your, the questions and concerns. The one thing that I will add is that there is also the, you know, it is different than the CEQA process, the building code process does also contemplate this kind of issue of construction and development in or around a slide area. We, of course, have either Willden or the county that does that, so I just want to potentially dispel the, it's not like that we're sticking our head in the sand about this being in the slide, or that, hey, we're not going to worry about it, and they're just going to be able to kind of do whatever they want. There are other, you know, mechanisms, in this instance, the building code, that does require that the development be done in a safe and, you know, protective manner.
Okay. There's no other questions from council?
I ask my questions.
Okay.
I have questions for the attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, but I'm through with, I'm through with John.
Okay.
That was it. Okay, I'm sorry about this, but I would like to get some clarification. I want to make sure that my understanding is correct on who would, if the planning, if the council did not take this under our jurisdiction, and if it was approved, do both parties, not only the developer... and if it was approved, do both parties, not only the developer, but the neighbors who have issues, can both of those parties appeal the decision to council? Or is it only if we didn't approve something and somebody wanted it approved?
Right, so there's, there's kind of two ways for this project to get before you all as a full item.
Right.
We are going through one of them tonight.
Right.
Everything gets reported to you all. You all decide whether or not to bring it up. It's my understanding that the decision from the planning commission had to be appealed within thirty days. Now, typically, that overlap, typically, you know, those are kind of two different paths to, to, to get to you all as a full item. Typically, we bring this, the planning commission item prior to that thirty-day timeline. Of course, last meeting was, was canceled. So, it's my understanding, and Mr. Signo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that that thirty day to appeal has already terminated, correct? As it was September twelfth, the thirteenth?
Right. It's under call.
Okay. If the council decides to take this under our advisement, since there isn't a chance for an appeal, is it de novo?
Correct, yes. You guys hear it.
Start.
De novo, yeah, there's no deference given to the planning commission. You don't have to overcome a standard. You guys hear it as if it's a new application.
And then on page thirty-five, it's page seven of the staff report. This has probably been in lots of staff reports before, but I never noticed it. Item D, like dog, it's thirty-five in our binder.
And I, I do apologize, Madam Mayor, pretend, I'm on the, I'm on the, yeah, could you just read it to me?
Yeah, I will. It says, "The lot shall be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the site plan on file at City Hall." What the hell is substantial conformance?
Sure. Means, and that is basically allows, if there's a non-substantive minor change, that does allow staff the ability to, and once again, that's minor. That is, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Signo for kind of some examples, but that's what it means. Basically, it's not, you are not locked into every dotted eye and every crossy. Substantively, you are. We're not going to say, hey, make the swimming pool bigger, you know, make the, make the residence bigger. No, no, that's not what it is.
My pad is three feet higher than.
Correct, no, no, yeah, that's.
Six inches a foot higher than it was supposed to be according to the surveys and things like that.
Yeah, nothing like that. This is, and I'll defer to him, that this is, hey, I was going to plant this type of grass. I've decided to change it. It's substantively the exact, you know, not something, but stuff like that. It, it is what allows staff to, to go ahead and sign off on that.
Thank you.
Is that it from council? All right, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Please, sir.
Hi, my name is Dave Long. I'm at Forty Chuck Wagon Road. I'm going to give a little bit of a, an overview of the, kind of the human impact of this project on the neighbors. Part of the reason we haven't gotten involved earlier is I was in a very horrific motorcycle accident six months ago. My neighbor, Mark Minkies, has been, has had health issues. He's not here tonight. So, we've kind of come late to the party. So, I, I'm going to ask you to, this is not going to be a technical discussion. This is going to be, I'm going to ask you to try to get into my shoes and try to explain how this project is going to impact the neighbors.
Okay, I'm going to allow you to do that, but please bear in mind, there's a lot of people here right now, so as succinctly as you can.
It's going to be succinct.
Thank you.
Okay, I've, uh, my prod, my property is directly across from the proposed project. When we came to Rolling Hills twenty-five years ago, we were under the impression that the city is going to do everything to keep the rural nature of any project as a priority. We have, there's a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot project that's going to be directly across from my house and Mark Minkies' house and all across Chuck Wagon Road. We, we are concerned about these issues you brought up, the fire safety issues, the noise for the next two to three years. I have a guest house that I've been working in for, since COVID. And I've heard the, the, the clearing of the brush and all the things that goes directly into, into our property. And I recognize there's been a big effort to try to appease the neighbors with all the different areas that you've discussed. I went to the planning commission meetings. I listened to everything. I understand there's been a huge effort to try to get this project in accordance with, you know, with your history. The bottom line is that the owner has basically built a spec house, which he is going to sell for financial gain. I just don't think that the city should allow that to happen when it impacts the neighbors. There are many neighbors that are going to be affected by this. So, I, I'm just trying to appease to your, your goodwill and understand that this has direct impact on the neighbors. There's been a lot of discussions that, I don't know anyone that's, that's in favor of this particular project. This is a huge house in a portion of the, of the canyon where there's no, there's no dwelling like that. And so, this is a very, very important issue for, for not just my, you know, my family, but also my neighbors. So, that, that's my, my overview. And I hope you really take that under, under consideration as you're weighing all the, all the issues with regard to this project.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Please.
Everyone, my name is Nikos Constant. I live at twenty-five George F. Road, right above the proposed project. I'm an attorney. And I'm also the, the neighbor who brought up the CEQA issues. The way CEQA works is there are indeed exemptions to the exemption. And I think that this, the slide issues around this property are, are indicative of the exemption to the exemption. And so, I'm just going to read from the twenty-twenty-two engineering report from GMU. Number one, page six, "It is not considered a constraint to the proposed development provided that remedial grading is performed as described in subsequent sections of this report. However, the potential for future debris flows originating from off-site cannot be eliminated. The seismic hazard zone map does indicate that the site is located with an area that is susceptible to earthquake-induced landsliding." There's a comment on page nine, "Project is feasible and practical from a geotechnical standpoint. I question the practicality of putting a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot project in a very delicate area of Rolling Hills." It goes on to say, "It is also the opinion of GMU Geotechnical that proposed grading and construction will not adversely affect the geologic stability of adjoining properties, provided grading and construction are performed in accordance with the recommendations provided in this report." Meaning that this is a very, this is a very surgical and technical construction that needs to happen for, in order for it to be successful. It goes on, "Most of the surgical geologic units and highly, and any highly weathered bedrock materials will require corrective grading to support the proposed grading and future improvements." Page ten, "The soil and bedrock materials to be involved in the proposed grading are anticipated to have medium-to-vary-high expansion potentials." Continuing, "Analysis should be performed to ensure the system will not significantly impact the site and adjacent areas." Page twenty-three, "As discussed in a previous section of this report, localized portions of the natural slopes surrounding the subject property may be subject to superficial instability related to excessive moisture, heavy runoff, and/or saturated conditions. In order to avoid future superficial instability, extra precautions should be taken with respect to landscaping, irrigation, drainage, and general slope maintenance. Specifically, the irrigation system should be designed to provide low rates of precipitation and operated to avoid saturation of ground surfaces. Surface drainage devices should also be cleaned and maintained on a regular basis to ensure their ability to convey water or capture potential debris from the natural slopes. Care should also be taken to maintain all subdrain outlets in order to ensure proper function." Page twenty-four, "Over-irrigation should be avoided. Furthermore, the fills should not be allowed to become excessively dry or saturated." Very delicate property that we're talking about building right here. There's an argument, "It should be recognized that much of Southern California is subject to some level of damaging ground shaking as a result of movement along the major active and potentially active fault zones that characterize this region." Well, that's not a great argument. All of our houses are subject to earthquake, but in this particular delicate area of Rolling Hills, it is subject to higher scrutiny. And that's where the CEQA exemption should come in. "Post-construction slope movements." Page twenty-seven, "The fill slopes and top-of-slope lot areas should be expected to undergo some stretching, differential vertical movement, or settlement in combination with differential lateral movement in the out-of-slope direction following grading. These movements are currently thought to be related to slope creep and lateral fill extensions, or lot stretching, as it is sometimes called." Lot stretching doesn't sound cool to me. And, and again, these problems appear to be greater closer to the top of the slope. Top of the slope is where my house is. There will also be settlement of the near-surface fill materials due to building loads. Page thirty-nine, "As described previously, the rear yard can be expected to undergo some differential vertical movement or settlement in combination with differential lateral movement in an out-of-slope direction as a result of post-construction slope movement." And finally, page forty, "Due to the inexact nature of the state of the art of this profession and the possible occurrence of undetected variables and subsurface conditions, we cannot guarantee that the conditions actually encountered during foundation construction will be identical to those described herein, or that there are no unknown subsurface conditions which could have an adverse effect on the use of the property." I really think that you should reconsider this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Jim?
Jim, I'm Leon Crest Road. Basically, the question I have about it is very simple. Is I thought there was a thing where there's no more flag lots in the city. Thought you had to have a hundred-and-fifty-feet of road frontage. And I don't believe this one has anywhere near it because it looks like, from the diagram that's in the packet, it shows a poppy trail coming up and just barely hitting a little toot that sticks off on it and comes right back away from it. This lot was never designed to have a house on it. They had to go to the association to get an exception. The plot of land had X number of house lots allotted to it. In its first existence, they were all taken and cut off and turned into house lots. There was no house lots left for this piece of property. And what they ended up doing is going to the association and asking to have a house lot. Nobody came down to fight it. Association gave them a house lot exception. So, you're not saying this is a normal piece of property that is entitled to a house lot until they came back and asked for it. And I don't know if the other people were aware of this or not, but anyway, it goes back to the same thing. It's got a, it's, doesn't have, I don't believe enough frontage for it. You can ask your people, but I don't, I don't see it.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
Can we ask John? John, does it fit the criteria of a frontage on Poppy Trail?
It's a developed lot already. We're not looking at a subdivision here. I guess there was, a number of years ago, I guess, there was a lot line adjustment that was approved, but.
Is there enough frontage on Poppy Trail to make it fit the current criteria?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a legal lot. So, I mean, they're, they're not moving the lot lines around. That's, that's been, that's already been done.
Is there enough? I mean, you do have to have a certain amount of frontage on a road. What, what is that? I don't know the exact number, but I.
For the frontage, I was part of when that happened.
Go ahead.
It was because people weren't trying to split a lot and they put a little skinny driveway or went back. So, then it was making it so that you couldn't split a lot and make one lot and another lot, the little skinny driveway.
Right, can't fly roads, but how much do you have?
But this is not a, but this is not a flag lot.
It's not a flag lot.
I, I don't know what the, the distance was in the conversation, which at least the way I remember having, doing it, was based upon when you created a second lot, that you couldn't create one that was just twenty feet or thirty feet or something like that.
Does that have thirty feet, twenty-five feet? Does this have that number? That's all I care about.
I don't have the exact width. I know that it's small. I, I think, I want to say it's like a hundred-and-fifty feet minimum width, you know, of a lot when you're creating a lot. But again, this has already been created, so it's.
You, you do have to have a certain amount on a street. I don't know if it's twenty, twenty-five feet, thirty feet.
Roy, if you take the cul-de-sacs, they, they're just little pie-shaped lots, mostly. They have enough for a driveway.
A driveway, so it's twenty-five feet, is that what it is?
It's something that we should be able to, to get. You should be able to provide that to us if possible. Like, it's not if possible, it is possible. We don't know, I don't know either, and I don't remember it from my time on the planning commission, how, what that requirement is. But we should know what, what it is and how much this property has.
Sure. And then, you know, I, I will say, at least in, and I'm desperately trying to find that right now. I, I will say that that is in the subdivision section. So, what that is, is that if someone wants to create a lot or divide a lot, that is when it would apply. If a lot legally existed, and once again, while it may, you know, be germane to your guys' review, which I totally get, but even if this lot had, was, was created, let's say, fifty years ago, forty years ago, and it, it could be a legal, non-conforming lot in that, hey, yes, it doesn't, it wouldn't comply now to now standards. However, you know, it was, it was legally created at that time.
Even when, if it was subdivided way back.
Correct, even if it was subdivided.
If that wasn't part of the subdivision requirements, then it's now legally non-conforming.
So, it's a legal lot to build on.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
I just had a question of the city attorney. In terms of a CEQA, does CEQA allow for a, a study to be done regarding the, the ability to build on a lot that would not subject the, the land to, to further land movement? If, if there is such a thing? I mean, I don't know if there is or not. I'm just asking if that is an equation within, within CEQA or some other criteria that the city would have prior to approval of a development under some other standard.
Right, true. So, so, so CEQA is not necessarily a law that posits development standards. It's not like there's, under, under CEQA, it says, hey, you can, can develop here, you can't develop here. Rather, what it's meant to do is a general study and analysis of the environmental impacts as a whole. And the idea of geology issues and, and soil issues are just one of, I think there's like fourteen or fifteen. It's, you know, aesthetics, lighting, noise, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, all that, all that stuff. And so, and so, as, as, as Mr. Constant posited, there's an exemption, and then there's the exception to the exemption. And for the sake of this argument, and that argument, since the sake of this discussion, it's, it's brief. So, I'll simply read kind of the pertinent exception language. So, once again, think of exemption, you're outside of the full CEQA review process. The exception brings you back in. So, you have the exemption, which I think we all, you know. Give on, give on everyone. And then the exception would, would bring us back in.
Treat someone differently.
I'm not, hang on.
That's the point. We did, we did require a CEQA review on one.
And so, yeah, and so, if I. Right, so, if, if I may, so, it's where there is a reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. That's one. And then the other one is kind of generally referred to as the location exception, where that, the project itself is ordinary, not necessarily a big impact, but it's where it's located. Now, I'm going to take it out of this context because I don't want to pollute the, the, the decision here. But think of that as if you're going to develop on where there used to be a gas station or a dry cleaners. And there's history that, hey, they've put all of those chemicals and waste and, and, you know, steel drums and buried them in the ground. So, in that instance, the location itself is what gives you pause for concern, not the fact that you could be developing a run-of-the-mill thing on top. So, those are kind of the two exceptions to the exemption, which I believe Mr. Constant was, was referencing.
On the first exception, the reasonable possibility that the activity will have significant impact on what?
The environment.
Significant, significant, and these were significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances.
Okay.
Almost a twenty-item checklist that includes the environment. And part of that is geologic study.
And, and so, my question with regard to that is, have you known of? And, and so my question with regard to that is, have you known of any situations where cities have used that exception to say, we need to have further study done in this area for some kind of geologic reason?
And, and so off the top of my head, I cannot point to one, however, I think it's safe to assume that, yes, in the, in the history of, of the state and CEQA, yes, at one point, someone has said, hey, I have enough concerns about the soil stability, or whatever term you want to use, that we believe that that is unusual circumstances. So I'll kind of flip that around and be a, and be a lawyer. I'm not aware of any authority that would prohibit you all from doing that.
Your question was, has it been done before?
Well, I mean, has that been the, the exception that has been used in a geologic area?
Aren't we talking about the project at 77? Isn't that what she's talking about?
No, talking about this one, but...
No, no, but I mean, the, you're asking for an example.
Well, I mean, to the extent that it wasn't the project itself, but the driveway, that is a little different. But I was thinking more in terms of the structure, because the structure certainly carries more weight than a, than a driveway in the case of 77.
Correct, and I, I just want to be sure that 77, that is not before us, not before the planning commission, and I understand...
You're asking for an example.
No, I understand, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, there's a couple things here. One, the neighbor across the canyon, no matter what size house would be built here, they're never going to be happy. All right? I'm working from home right now, and I can hear the grading on Middle Ridge. We've been all day long, I can hear the trucks, I can hear that. Yeah, it's not fun. We graded for nine months because, because of all the boilerplate, there's a lot of boilerplate in what he was reading, this thing and that thing. When they start digging, we dig all the way down to bedrock. No matter how deep bedrock is, you keep going. And then, the guy stands there, and you pay him 300 bucks every other day to show up, and you put this much dirt down, then he tests the compaction, then he comes back, another 300 bucks, and the tractor goes back and forth, beep, 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 all day long.
They'll probably require a case on this one, too.
So, the, the words that are in there, the lawyer words, at the end, we don't know what's there, it's underneath the ground, they're going to dig a hole, and they're going to find out what's underneath the ground. And then, everyone is going to hedge overkill of what that looks like. If we're concerned about it being a landslide, right, which LA County, that's their job, right, because you're doing this, not our job, I'm not a geologist. If we're concerned about what that is, this house will be like a giant cork put in there. They're going to put, put it all the way down into the bedrock and pour a ton of concrete into the hill. So, there's two parts here is, one, the fact that it is not having anything on it, and now it will, that's every empty lot in this city. And every time we have an empty lot, nobody, including me, wants something built across from me. But, that's not how it works. The lots are lots, and, and if the house is big, if it was smaller, it'd be a little less grading or whatever, but how small is small? In this city, there's a lot of big, giant houses. So, I can understand the concern. If I lived next to it, I wouldn't be happy about it either. But, the job is, this has gone through this process since March to get us to here. We rely on the county and their engineers, and we rely on these engineers, so we rely on the geologists, so when it's opened up, to get in there and to make sure it makes sense and it's safe. And that's how they're going to put this whole thing together. So, I don't know, you know, vote how you're ever going to vote, that's what that is, but I think those are the two things. The fact that it's a spec house, I don't know. There's tons of things, all day long. You could tell me right now, I've been living here 20 years, and if someone showed up on my house and offered me enough money, I'd sell my house. All right? And so...
Your neighbors would sell it for you.
Yes.
They force you to, force you to sell it.
Everything's for sale, that's just how it works. So, I don't know what that looks like. And the goal here is, is this a quality product that's going to be put into a place that has been sitting there for a long time, with a barn that's been abandoned, with a goofy little road? They're going to put in a 20-foot driveway for the fire trucks, which means they're putting in fire hydrants for the fire trucks. All these things are going to happen, which should make it safer. And then they're going to take all that brush and they're going to clear a whole bunch of it out. So, a lot of those things are going to improve the scenario from a fire, whatever standpoint. It is not going to improve the cross-the-canyon, the, the noise and whatever, no matter what you put in. And what we're talking about is a few months of grading, if you made it way smaller versus way bigger versus whatever. It goes, that's what that is. So that's where they're, the reading of the legal part, if we polled other ones of these things, the legal would be very similar in that. Expansive soil, we all have expansive soil. That's why we go to bedrock, that's why we pour, my, my basement walls are 13 inches thick with number-one rebars, on three-inch centers. Why? Because I live on a flat lot down at the bottom. They're going to pour concrete like crazy. So, vote however we're going to vote, but that, whether somebody else is always supposed to determine, right, whether we're supposed to do the CEQA or not. That's not, I mean, you can vote against it, I'm totally fine with that, but we rely on LA County to make sure it's safe, every single time. So, the question I have is, if you're going to vote against it, are we voting against it because we're expecting something different, or not at all? Because the not at all is, you know, if the guy's spec-ing it, then let's find out how much money he's thinking he's going to make, okay? He's going to make $2 million bucks, so let's buy it, or whatever. There's lots of options to do that. The fact that it sits empty, and now it's maybe not, it's a, it's a buildable lot in the Rolling Hills. Someone's finally going to build it. All the easy lots are gone. My lot was easy, only, and in comparison to what this is going to be, but your next choice is not easy either, and the next one's not easy either. So...
You're going to make a motion?
I make a motion when your crew has presented. You can vote now.
Stephen File. Stephen File, please.
But I don't get a chance to say why?
No, no.
She can say whatever.
Yeah. Let's get a second so we can continue the discussion.
I would second.
Okay. So, go ahead.
So, I either attended or listened to all the planning commission meetings on this. I've read all the correspondence that has been sent on it, some of which I find compelling, some of which I don't. Issues regarding that you can see the lights from cars across the canyon and things like that. I think almost all of us can see lights going up and down streets behind us. I understand the noise, the construction, and the problems that construction brings. And Mr. Long, I, I empathize with that, believe me, but everybody was inconvenienced when our homes, each of our individual homes were built, somebody around. What I do find compelling, though, and in all the time I've been on council, I've not ever voted to take, I thought the planning commission did an excellent job in trying to bring this as they, they could, did the best they, they could. I'm concerned that there wasn't a chance, because of us, that there was not a chance for it to come back to us on an appeal. I've never taken the position to take something under our jurisdiction here instead of the planning commission, because I think they've always done an excellent job. I have concerns about this one, and I, I would vote, I would recommend that we take this under our jurisdiction, not because I'm looking necessarily for a different outcome. I don't know whether there would be a different outcome. And I agree that a smaller project is just going to make a little less difference. But I think in the environment that we're in right now, with what's going on, most of our houses would probably never have been approved to be built up here. Those of us that lived in old houses, if we had what's going on today back then. And I just think that it would behoove us to take every measure that we possibly can to make sure, in a sensitive area like this, where what the people went through down there, what could possibly be happening again, to give it our due diligence and take it under our jurisdiction.
Before I vote, one way or the other, what are your concerns? You said concerns, I want to know what they are, because it fits all the criteria. Legally, we should be passing this. It fits every cri, every law in our city. But if there's something that I'm not appreciating, I'd like to know, because I would go and have a look.
No, I, I don't think that it's not that it doesn't fit every law. I think there are every criteria that we have, you know, the lot coverage, the counties told us it's okay, all of those things. I think it does fit that. My concern is that we've had lots of things up here that did fit everything that our criteria was, and still, problems have happened.
You're going to have to tell me which ones, because I don't know any approval. I've been here since 2002, as you know. I don't know of a single one that we've approved that's caused a slide.
Well, I think there were projects that were approved a long time ago that caused problems.
So in the 80s or something?
Whenever, prior to when a lot of this stuff was being done. I think we have more information available to us. I can't say anything specific. I would have concerns about this if I was a neighbor there, and I do have concerns about, about a lot of the projects. Usually, the planning commission, I think, does a good job in checking that all out. I think in this one, it's a little more sensitive area than in other places, and I'm not trying to treat different places differently. We are supposed to treat everything the same, but every property, we say over and over again, every property really isn't the same, and I think this one has particular concerns that I would be more comfortable with if we took it...
I still would like to know the concerns. Is it slide concerns?
Yes.
That's one.
I'm sorry, yes, land movement. And we all have expansive soil, and the comment, as Jeff calls it, the lawyer-ese, everybody's, you know, you're going to have contraction, you're going to have this, you're going to have lot expansion. I think that applies everywhere. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about slide.
So, I'm happy to support you. I got it, as you know, I'm not a geological engineer.
Me neither.
So you're looking at it, I'm not going to be able to make a more educated decision, because that's why we're on the county, because they have geological engineers. I'm happy to look at it with you, if you want us to, I'll vote that way. But I can tell you that me standing on this property is not going to make me know one bit, one way or the other, if it's stable 50 feet down.
And it, I, it won't. I've stood on the property and standing on it, I don't think it would make you understand that. I think it's just a chance for another, an additional, not another, an additional set of eyes on it and questions to be asked. I've learned questions about some of the, learned things about some of the things we've approved on Crest that I thought we understood and that maybe we didn't, now that we're seeing with what's happening with some of the water coming off those projects on Crest, that just, I now have more questions that I would ask if it was under, if it were in front of me now. And since we don't have any other chance to ask them other than, since there's not going to be an opportunity to have them do an appeal, this would be the only other chance to ask those questions.
Because the residents don't have a chance to appeal. Is that accurate? No one would have a chance to appeal? Is that accurate?
Correct. So the, the, the appeal is governed, of course, by the municipal code, and it, and it simply says that all appeals must be filed on or before the 30th calendar day after the adoption of the planning commission's resolution on the project or application. So that 30, that 30 days has a...
We missed that because we didn't have a meeting.
Well, correct, no, they...
Why did we miss that?
Well, once again, there's, there's, there's two ways that the project can get before you. The, the, any project opponent could have appealed this the day after the planning commission, two days after the planning commission, up until the 30th day. What I was referencing is that historically, we have brought these items to the city council prior to the expiration of that 30 days. Not because it's legally mandated, rather just as a way to bring it to you all first, and that way then the, the potential project opponents or potential appellants could then, you know, file their appeals. That's not mandated by the code, and because last council meetings, the last council meeting was canceled, we unfortunately, just the way the time works, weren't, weren't, weren't allowed to do it. The reporting to you all of planning commission is on a 45-day deadline. We, of course, made that, we just happen to be in the, in the interim between that 30 days and 45 days.
Okay, and my concern is also slide-related. I'm not a geotactical expert by any means, but I deal with them a lot, and I have different properties, for example, that are subject to geotactical studies, and I know my way around the studies, and I agree with you, the wording in it is, that wasn't the lawyer speaking, that was a geotech speaking. And, yeah, a lot of that was, and I wouldn't say boilerplate, but it's, you'll see that in a lot of different reports, and it's, frankly, it's concerning, even on the projects that I'm involved with on a professional level, but the proximity to the, the former slide and some, you know, the, the fact that it wasn't as vetted as, say, the 77 Portuguese Bend project, it, it just leaves me with concerns. I, I'd like to see a, a greater vetting, you know, I'd like to see it go through a CEQA analysis and...
Well, there's not, that's a civil rights violation, flat out. And I, and I found out that SEN did that, that's a, we're treating these people different than anybody in the history of the city. That's a civil rights violation.
Treat them just like the project at 77.
I would, I would push back on that, council member.
We did that.
Right, very, very respectfully, I just want to say that the CEQA is a case-by-case analysis. There is no precedential requirement, as long as the potentially alleged, a different treatment is not based on a protected class, I believe you all, you all are fine.
Who did you say?
So every project is, is subject to CEQA. The staff initially takes review, often in conjunction with my office, and we say, this is what we think we're, we're going to do here. We then present it to the city's decision-making body. In this instance, it was the planning commission. I believe the CEQA, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the CEQA concerns were similarly raised, and I believe there was discussion there, but I wasn't there to cover it, so I can't speak authoritatively on that. But ultimately, it is you all that, who decide. If you're not convinced, if you have issues with it, now is the time to, to say so, but that's kind of how the CEQA process works. It's typically led by staff and consultation with my office, and then presented to the city's decision-making body.
I don't think we've ever voted to require a CEQA on a property. Have, you said we do it, this council? I don't think we do.
No, no, I, I didn't, I said that's, that's the way the CEQA process works. We all, we...
We don't do that.
We all provide our recommendation, it's up to you all to decide whether yes or no. And once again, and tonight, we're not deciding, it's only whether to bring it up.
But the planning commission could have make, made that decision if they'd want, if they'd wanted. So the fact that it hasn't come to us before doesn't mean that a planning, that the planning commission may not have required...
I've never seen one required.
Well, because we haven't seen...
We've seen a lot of projects.
But no, we haven't seen one that may be coming where it was required.
What's going to change? I mean, that's my, that's my thing here is...
I don't know.
Is if everyone was complaining about the size here, complaining about the size or the location or whatever, they looked at moving it, and then those neighbors didn't want to play, they looked at, because the road goes on the other people's property, because they had to make it bigger for the fire trucks. They looked at pushing it over here, but then the grading had a little issue behind it, so they have to be, to deal with it up the hill. So this was the spot that was picked. It was 42,000 square feet, which is a lot, because it's on a hill, and then that got swished way down. I, I'm just...
I, I'm not looking to change the project itself. I mean, I'm, I'm looking to have a better understanding of the, the environmental impact. So it's not, it's not, I, I'm not saying the project's too big, that, that's not...
No, I, I understand, but, but we're basically going, but we're about to, if we do this, right, and we vote, we vote, I'm totally fine with the answer, is we're going to add an enormous amount of time, money, and energy to this project, which is fine, so that's how it works. But I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the end goal is. Usually, when we're doing this, and we take it under, it's because the roof line is in this, or this is here, the, every project has the, the noise dirt problem, straight out, every single one of them. And every single time we approve them, because it has the noise dirt problem, it's just what it is. And it's bad for the neighbors, but then the house gets done and they landscape it and it looks fine. It just takes a while, and yes, it's inconvenient, we've all been there. I'm just not sure what the, what the end change is going to be. If we're like, we want them to cut the house in half, we want it half the size, you know, if we want it half the size because we think it's going to make half of whatever, at the end of this thing, I don't know. I only know about grading and all this stuff because I've lived through it. And we're doing development, and we do all this stuff, and we rely on professionals to make these decisions.
So I'm not trying to make it smaller or anything. That's not what I'm looking for. I'm gonna say this as tactfully as I possibly can. I think the buck stops here. I think it's our due diligence to take an extra look at this, and that's, that's it.
If Leah wants to, I'm okay with that. It doesn't hurt to look, right? By the way, Leah, I don't see anything wrong with the project. It is one hundred percent conforms to our laws.
I-
And we don't say, it's the law.
I, I agree.
And it conforms to our laws.
I agree.
Okay, but I don't mind looking.
I, I have a, a question, just ultimately, for the end goal. I understand the building and safety is, is required to ascertain the safety of the building in the process of building it, so that it's going to have all the safety standards we have available to us currently in the code. My question is, do they consider the safety of adjoining properties, or is it only the building itself that is being built? I mean, is there any provision to that?
The building's safe, there's the building part, and then there's the geology part. I don't know the lady's name, but she comes out all the time. Is-
Talking about G-Mid?
I don't know. But they, anyways, they come out, they worry about that first, and you have to get through that part and get approval on that, and in this city, it's like Zedware, we had to first get grading permits and get some grading signed off, then we get concrete, and then we had to get that signed off before you even could start building a house.
Yeah.
So they worried about whether it's gonna move and what's gonna be first.
Correct, and to answer your question, yes, the, my understanding of the process, it also looks at any impacts it could have on your neighbors or the general public health and safety. So it doesn't just look at these singular building, it looks, not, I don't wanna say area-wide, but, yeah.
But, okay. So it's not gonna be just saying, well, it's on pylon, so this house is not moving, but the whole dirt will just go out and destroy everybody else around it?
Correct, yeah, that's-
Zero copy trail is in the middle of this.
Right.
Yes.
And four had two copy trails in the middle of this slide.
Yes, right.
And they built a house and a pool-
Right.
And a barn, all in the middle of this slide.
Correct.
That is true.
Because they fixed the slide by taking all the dirt away and putting it all back. And believe me, that was horrific for the entire neighborhood.
It was, and, and those properties were remediated, the risk was remediated, by what they did to those before they put them back on the market for sale.
Right. I, I have no doubt the grading for this and the caissons is gonna be astronomically expensive, the county's gonna make them do, but I can tell you, I can't make any judgments on that, and I guarantee none of this council can.
No, I, 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 I don't. Again, I just would feel, I would just feel better.
So I would withdraw my second on the receiving file, and then if Leah, do you wanna make a motion to take it under consideration?
I would make a motion that we take the project under our jurisdiction.
Then I would second that.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Wait, so I make sure-
No, no, it's, it's-
Christian, did, did you get that vote? Or excuse me, Mr. State Clerk?
Yep, take under jurisdiction. We need a field trip date.
Do we wanna do that first thing, since we've all said that we don't think standing on the property's gonna teach us anything?
That's the only thing we do.
But I mean, do you wanna do that right away, or do you wanna?
What else we can do, Leah? That's all, when we take it under jurisdiction, we have all the data in front of us. So we do a site revisit, but we've got all the data. Nothing's gonna change.
And so, Mr. Mayor, we can, of course, schedule that now, and of course, or John can reach out to the, the city council as a whole to get dates for that as well.
I'm tired of doing it now.
Okay.
We usually do it in the morning, so it's getting light a little later, seven o'clock.
Change next week, though.
When is that, the third?
The first week.
Why don't we try to do it, how about we do it either Monday, the thirtieth, or Tuesday, the thirty-first, at seven AM?
I'm out of town. Sorry. But you can do it without me, and I can, and I can do it some other time.
No, we can't.
I can do it some other time. I can do it some other time. I get back in town on, I'm here for the, I get, I'll be here the si, the sixth.
The sixth. How, we need forty-eight hours, or how long do we need to notice people?
Usually, well, seventy. It's seventy-two, yeah.
So when do you, we could do, if we could do Friday, the twenty-seventh, this Friday, if Leah, and then after that, we can't do it till after the sixth.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I will not be here on the twenty-seventh either. I'm, I'm here in town. I'm, I'm here for, here, for this meeting, and I'm leaving after this meeting.
When do you get back, Leah?
Sixth.
The sixth of November.
Yes.
So good.
How about the seventh?
How about Monday, Tuesday, the seventh of November?
If it's early.
It's election day, yeah. I, I have a-
Ten days.
We're hearing it. Well, you know.
Oh, gosh. Oh, you need to be there. Of course you do, because you're gonna have to walk up this hill, because what do you see? I, you know, you see this property, you park it by me off the way I know.
And, and so, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, the answer about the, the number of hours before a meeting was accurate, albeit, we typically notice these as public hearings, which does require a ten-day notice.
Ten days.
Ten days, correct.
What's with ten days?
The, the field trip requires ten days?
A ten-day public notice. We need to, we need to notice the, everyone, the neighbors, and put a newspaper on, in ten days.
We put it in the newspaper as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so would you, B, can you do it on the eighth?
Uh, yeah.
Is that enough time to get the newspaper?
Uh, yes, for noticing.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the eighth. I, I might, but I can't guarantee it. The eighth and the ninth, I just don't know right in front of me.
Hmm, you said ninth?
So eight, nine, ten, that's November. I, I was pretty pleased with myself that I knew the next two weeks, but I do not know eight, nine, ten.
Well, are we looking at the next thirteenth then?
All right, hang on a second.
I mean, it's possible I'm available. I just don't know.
Let's, so here's, here's what's due this, is John's gonna send out-
Yeah.
An email. Everyone's gonna give you the best date you can do. We should do this as soon as we can, and we're gonna stick it on the next council meeting after that, right? We're gonna do a in-person visit, right? And then we come back to the next city council meeting, and it's on there, and we talk about it, and then we can approve it or not approve it at that point in time. Right?
Correct, yeah.
So the next council meeting is the sixth, correct?
The thirteenth is your next council meeting, and then that's your last-
We don't have one on the sixth?
No, it's the thirteenth, the thirteenth.
I'm in.
Ah, okay. So if we could do it that week, then we could come here and vote on the thirteenth.
Yes.
Okay.
And also, I mean, once again, that's typically how we do it if the applicant, if it, if it doesn't work for the thirteenth, we can always attempt to push it and provide that the applicant's good with it to the next one. We obviously don't wanna do that, but-
Yeah, we just-
We wanna get it moving. We gotta get it moving.
It's March.
Sure.
Are you available on Friday, the tenth?
I think, I, I don't know. I just don't know, because I don't have the orders coming with me that far.
John's gonna send out an email. We're gonna figure out where our times are. We're gonna make sure the applicant knows, and then we're gonna go visit it, and then we're gonna, next week, because we only have, but when we vote on it, do we have to vote and then have another meeting in those?
No.
So when it, when it-
When it comes back, it'll be the, the, the full item for you guys.
So we can vote, and it can be done, because we're gonna run out of-
Correct, exactly. So typically, how it goes, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, it's noticed as a public hearing for the site visit. At the end of that, you then continue that public hearing to whenever the next meeting is, at which point, that meeting, you guys will review the, the, the project and be, and if you guys are comfortable, either vote to deny, vote to approve, or vote to approve with different conditions at that meeting. There's no requirement that it comes back again.
So the thirteenth, we would vote on the resolution, up or down?
Correct.
Or with conditions.
Right.
Okay.
And it is more, and as we're gonna be giving John the, our dates, are we saying, are we in agreement that morning is the best for most people?
It, it's definitely better for me.
It, it is for me, too.
All right.
You can do it on election day if you want. I mean, that's fine.
Well, you said you have something of a-
No, I mean, I have to, no, have to be there till nine fifteen. You can try to make sure.
So that's the seventh?
I can do the seventh.
So we got that whole week there.
I can, too.
The seventh to the tenth, we should be able to find a day in that week.
Would you wanna do, like, seven thirty on the seventh?
We wanna make sure it's light. Seven thirty, it's definitely light.
Yeah, it's gonna be lighter after the daily-
Seven, seven oh four.
So you're right, seven thirty is probably better than seven. Okay. I, I can't say for sure. I, I can't say if the seventh is a good one. But you're gonna have to send a number. Okay, we'll just have to send them a date out. It'll be that week, Sunday.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Next item is, can be, consideration to receive and file the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve from the planning commission granting approval of zoning case number twenty-three dash zero seven seven for a site plan review and lot line adjustment between three lots at ten, twelve, and fourteen Pine Tree Lane to create two larger lots with a combined gross lot area of seven point eight four acres, and finding the project categorically exempt from the SEQA.
Mayor Matt Wilson, mayors of the city council, this item, before you look at Pine Tree Lane, is zoning case number twenty-three dash zero seven seven. It's for a site plan review and a lot line adjustment. Sorry. A second. Okay, the, the subject property is located in the top portion of the city of Oland Hills, located in that area, right over there. This shows the site location. Subject properties are located at the very end of Pine Tree Lane. There are a total of three lots. Only ten, ten Pine Tree Lane is developed. The other two lots are vacant. So this is ten Pine Tree Lane. The other two lots are to the north. This shows the plan. It's a lot line adjustment, and what they're doing is the, the red lines there are the existing lot lines. So there's three lots currently, lot one, lot two, and lot three. What they're looking is to eliminate those two lines, pretty much. It's actually a lot line adjustment, so they're actually looking to create this lot line right there in the green to create two lots. So essentially, what they're doing is they're taking three existing lots and they're making them two. And to answer the question earlier about street frontage, it's actually a hundred and fifty feet. I, I actually measured. In this case, because they are getting rid of that, that middle lot, these street frontages actually become wider. So, and in, in the other case, of course, it's already legal, not forming, so. This just shows some information on the proposed lots, the middle column, the existing lot, one, two, and three. Again, they're taking three lots, they're making them into the close two lots there, and they, they all equal in size, about seven acres total of gross lot area. What was before the planning commission was the site plan review and the lot line adjustment. The planning commission public hearings were noticed in the daily breeze, and notices were also mailed to residents within a thousand feet of the subject property in early September. We did not receive any complaints or concerns about this project when it went before the planning commission. The planning commission found this project to be exempt from SEQA, and their action was to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve approving the site plan review and lot line adjustment. And that's what's before the city council now, is our recommendations to receive and file the planning commission's decision.
Questions for John?
No, I'd just like to note that I was on a field visit.
I had a question. The, with the new lot line, I, did I understand that the association is requiring a twenty-five-foot easement on, or a, yeah, easement on either side of the new, the new lot line?
I wanna say yes. That's, that's what I, I don't know, I don't know if the, the plan shows it here, but, uh-
So they're gonna abandon the existing easements at the existing lot lines and then require it at the new lot line?
Correct. Yeah, that's what they're showing here. They're showing twenty-five feet there, twenty-five feet on this side.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Anybody else? Okay. I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Would you like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Counsel?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'd move that receiving file.
I'll second.
It's a far better project. No, it is. It's a far better project. They for, it's just better.
Please say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're now on eleven, I'm sorry.
Old Business.
Yeah, twelve Old Business. Approve current noise levels in the council chambers or reconsider improve contract change order four B with AC Pros to resolve airflow noise concerns in the city council chambers as part of the new, as part of the city hall heating, ventilation, and air conditioning project.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Before you tonight is an item that we discussed on September twenty-fifth. It's come back to you tonight with one small tweak in the sense that I am giving you the option to approve as-is, and I'll explain in a second, or to pursue one of the two versions of the contract orders that was before you on the twenty-fifth. Since John started the commission presentations this evening, the air conditioning has cycled on three or four times, and so hopefully, you haven't noticed that.
We hear it.
We'll hear it, but not, not to the levels that it was when, when there was issue prior. So what has happened in the time since we last talked, and it's all in the staff report, S and K did come in again, and what they did was, they got into the motherboard of the, of the unit for this room. The units were all balanced and set per, per code requirements as it relates to the CFM and the amount of air that is necessary for this room by code based on the, the amount of occupancy that this room can handle. They got into the motherboard, and one of the, the things that they changed on it was actually the ramp-up period for how the air blew out. So the air was coming in at basically a hundred percent right away when it was kicking on. That was definitely creating an enormous force of air. Now the air ramps up over about an eight-minute period before it gets to a hundred percent. So when I turned the system back on during commission, the room had gotten very hot. It was already at seventy-five degrees because we had more people in the room, and the loudest it was, at least in these past thirty minutes or so, was during that initial getting it from seventy-five to seventy-two. And then subsequent, in the other three cycles, it's about the, the level that you hear now. With that said, the adjustments that were made on that first day that S and K came out put us underneath, if you look at your staff report, it actually put us underneath what the code requires us to have, especially for a room of this size, in terms of air coming in from outside and, and how the intake is from the inside. A week later, S and K came back. Oh, and I, and I should mention, and it is in the staff report, the direction last time was to cover the first vent, per Dr. Black's recommendation, and to see what happened. And we did do that. We covered, you know, already came over, we covered the vent, taped it off, and what it did was, it just moved the loud noise over one vent.
So we didn't have it here.
So, right, so.
So that worked.
But as I said, there's four outputs on these, on these, these vents up here. It just, it just pushed the noise over one. So it, it didn't unfortunately achieve the desired effect, and our engineer recommended right away, as Mayor Wilson had mentioned that night, that, that would create potential issues with the, the actual unit itself, because then the balancing is off and it can create internal pressure on the unit. So he made those changes. A week later, S and K came back with AC Pros, and we spent about an hour working on, again, at the motherboard level, you know, fixing dip switches to get the CFM back up to being within code, making sure that we were pulling in the correct amount of air from outside, and without having to go out and have a balancer come out and, and rebalance the system, we spent quite a bit of time here trying to get it to the level that it's at now. So what I will say is, and I think only councilman, Mayor Protem Mersch and possibly Mayor Wilson were in here when it was at that non-code compliant level, and it was a little bit quieter. It was pushing out less air. So the noise level goes up a teeny bit with the fixes they made that day to put us in code compliance, but this is really pretty much the loudest it will be. And I think most of the noise now that we hear is actually coming through the intake valve, whereas back on the twenty-fifth, most of the noise was coming out of that first vent, you know, blowing hard. So with that said, and I'm sorry that I'm not using an enormous amount of technical speak, because I did put it into the staff report, this is really a, a subjective decision on behalf of this body to decide, is this an acceptable level? And if not, what, what pathway would you like us to take?
The quotes we have, we have two quotes. There's still, or two sides of it, anyways. We have whatever, twenty-six thousand dollars. This, in general, is gonna cost us twenty-six thousand dollars today, and it's gonna cost us twenty-six thousand dollars in February. I didn't notice it at all, but I'm not sitting anywhere B is. So it's been, it's way better. And before, it would turn on, and you couldn't hear what they're saying, and they can't hear us, but that's a whole different problem, that we don't have microphones and stuff, whatever. So I'm totally game if, we're really more on B here, is we try it for a couple more times. Of course, it's gonna be winter, which means it won't kick on at all.
Yeah.
I think we're just gonna have to take it.
I, I think it is much, much better than it had been. I mean, I, I can notice a significant difference, and I can actually hear people, you know. I thought it was going deaf, you know. It's like, what if, what's that? I'm like, having to read their lips, you know. But, so though, no, this is better. Whatever they did, the tweaking, it, it made a significant improvement, I think.
So what do we need to do? I, I vote that we table it?
You have to, what?
No, no, you don't need, no, no.
We have to prove something.
Public comment.
We have an obligation to pay our vendor. We can't just not pay them and wait for a-
And then, public comment first, Mr. Mayor.
We need to approve the noise levels now, is that what?
So the, the request by staff is to evaluate the current noise levels and to approve it So the request by staff is to evaluate the current noise levels and to approve it as is or to, you know, direct staff to possibly choose one of the two contract orders that have been proposed. And if you approve it as is, then I would also request that you release the checks that have been...
That's another item later on.
Right. And then later on, I have the item to accept the job as complete, which had come prior to the last.
I would make a motion.
Hold on, hold on, this is the time for questions. If there's not any more, for Christian, I'll open it up to public comment. No questions? Okay, public comment, anyone? Okay, back to council.
I would make emotionally approve the current noise levels in the council chamber.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
There's also approved release of health checks.
But isn't that later on?
No, no. Well, let's get this, let's get this clear. If we're going to accept it the way it is, then like I said, we have an obligation to pay the vendor.
Let's go ahead and vote.
All right, so then the second part, if you want me to, I'll make a motion to approve release of the health checks for S and K and for AC pros.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we're on 12B, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, 12B, thank you. Your staff report on that?
Mayor Wilson? Item before you on 12B is the, to approve the development plans for an emergency outdoor siren system at three locations. Direct staff to proceed with permitting and installation of the siren system and make a finding. Project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a project that's been going through city council since about 2019, 2020 fiscal year. On April 2021, staff recommended that the city council engage the services of HQE. They are here tonight with Representative Mr. Chris Holly to answer any further questions. But to give you a little bit of background, in January of 2022, city council met and had staff present a final feasibility study. They had some, they requested additional information about that study. And on March 14th, 2022, city council unanimously voted to amend the service agreement with HQE to investigate additional siren pole locations. In July 2022, HUE submitted a revised feasibility study. In January of this year, city council selected four locations. The one that's here at city hall, one at the fire station over at Crest Road West, the Cal Water facility, which was actually later on, was no longer an option per Cal Water, and the easement location at Crest Road East Gate. Again, there's been a couple of meetings, but around May, that's when we were informed from by Cal Water that their site location there was no longer an option. And on June 12th, city council received an update for sound propagation confirming that the three locations would allow for the majority of the residents to hear the sirens at 70 decibels. On June 12th of this year, city council approved moving forward with the installations of the siren for the three locations at 50 feet high. HQE has prepared those development plans, which are part of the packet. The first location is here at city hall. The new 50-foot high pole will be located at the city hall parking lot, just outside the council chambers. It's going to be about 10 feet from the utility room and 12 feet from the fence, fronting Palisades Drive North. That location is actually located in the city of Rolling Hills Estates. And we've reached out to Rolling Hills Estates about that and they are meeting with their legal team about that. But we do plan that, you know, they'll, you know, we can get it, move ahead and get that moving forward. The second site is located by Fire Station 56 on Crest Road West. That one is actually going to be located off of the street down below on a slope. And since, so since it's actually located down below, it's actually going to be 70 feet from adjacent grade from bottom to top. However, if you're standing level on Crest Road West, it'll be up 50 feet from where you're standing. That additional grade is necessary so that they're able to be able to project the sound above the homes, particularly the one across the street over at three Crest Road West. The third location is located on Crest Road East outside of the gate. The location's within the RHCA easement, approximately 10 feet from an existing Edison pole and six feet from the fence. According to HQE, the two locations at city hall and Crest Road East Gate will be standard poles at 50 feet high. And they comply with the terms of the agreement. However, the pole located on Crest Road West near the fire station will need to be customized. And so that will add additional cost in about, from about 10 to 12,000 compared to the other standard poles. According to RHA, RHA wanted the poles to be off the street level down below, so it would be less seen. But according to RHCA, it would not save any costs because they'd have to have a security wall placed around that pole if it was located closer to the street. It would also be more visible and much more intrusive. So with that, again, HQE is here for any further discussion. We're just bringing you the design plans. Again, you approved these before in the past. We're just showing you the exact locations and the height. The real, only real deviation is that one on Crest Road, which will be 70 feet from grade to the very top instead of 50 feet.
Is this the first time we've heard about the 70-foot pole?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't remember it before, so.
No, we didn't, no location.
Yeah, no, that was not discussed before. The locations were discussed as part of your approval prior to this. The 70 feet is based off of sidewalks with the community association, city staff, and HQE. And HQE making a determination based on input from the RHCA not necessarily wanting it right within the 10-foot easement roadside, that it would be best to go back about 25 to 30 feet downslope adjacent to the fire station. So the extra 20 feet for the 70 feet is really based on the slope down. So as John... I'm sorry?
It's still within the easement?
It's still within the community association's easement. But that extra 20 feet is still below Crest Road. So if you are looking at the pole from the perspective of I'm at Crest Road, it's 50 feet from Crest Road up so that it won't have any implications or interference of blowing siren horns into that three Crest Road West.
And we do want to make sure that you're aware of the additional cost increase potential.
So I have a question for, do I ask the...
Yeah, would you please come forward?
My question is, there's a bunch of big tall antennas right by the fire station right now. Why can't you put it right next to those?
Next to the fire station?
Next to the fire station, there's a bunch of big tall antennas sticking up. I thought that it was just going to be another one right there with all those others. Why, is there a reason you can't put it there next to all those others?
This is the location that was best suited to have the sirens for coverage for the propagation study, for sound coverage?
It's not very far from where this is. It's like right on the other side of the fire station driveway.
And this is where the Rolling Hills Community Association approved, where they wanted off that road right there?
Well, I mean, there's three or four big tall antennas there already. One more, I don't see why that'd be a difference.
Is that property owned by the county as opposed to the...
I believe that is LA County Fire property.
So that's, they won't let us put it on next to those other?
We didn't approach him about that. We want, we were told to keep it in Rolling Hills Estates property lines.
So my next question is, because where it is now, where that post is up there, if you're sitting on that view site, that's pretty prominent. Why did you not put it closer to the fire department driveway? I mean, I know there's a trail, but you could still have it right next to the trail and not so. It's going to stick up out of that view site. It's not going to be very nice.
Again, we placed it where Rolling Hills Community Association authorized this place. We propose the sites if we want...
So they might post it to the trail, right smack in the middle of the view site?
There's a, I want to say it's a weather instrument there that sort of collects rainwater. It's going to be kind of close to that location.
Right, so, but it's not close to the, it's 130 feet from the parking lot or something like that from the driveway? Why can't it be 10 feet from the driveway, 15 feet from it? Still not on the road, obviously.
Well, there's also a bunch of foliage trees right there by the firehouse.
There are, right.
They had to cut off those back in order for us to go put the pole in the ground there.
Well, no, they wouldn't.
Are we talking about the south side of the road, north side of the road?
South side to Oceanside. And it'd be west of the horse trail, just right adjacent to the horse trail. It'd be 50 feet from where you've got this and far less noticeable from our view site and from hiking on Crest Road. Far less.
Additionally, that flatter area is more conducive to the installation?
Yeah, I don't care about that long term. I really couldn't care less if it's a little harder for you right now because we have to live with it forever. And if it's a little bit harder to put it in close to the trail and we don't have to ruin our view site, I'd far prefer that.
We can definitely take a look at that if you like, the other sidewalk is a deep, you can do that.
Other questions for?
Otherwise, great. I think the city's fine and the city's fine, but that one is not good.
Yes, I have a question there. Was indication that the fence would have to be removed at the end of Crest Road, you know, where the...
Correct, yes.
Okay, so are you talking about the whole gate?
No, this is the fence line outside of the property where Edison has their easement, their, their start. So we'd be pulling that fence line out, install the pole, re-putting the fence in after coordinating with the Edison.
Okay, is this, because I'm not sure if you, that didn't go drive it after I got the packet on Friday. So just wanted to find out, is this fence parallel to Crest Road?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not the fence line that is the...
It's not a security fence, correct.
Security, okay, that wasn't made clear in the pack. And I couldn't tell just looking at the picture because there wasn't anything, any reference point to it as to what it is. Okay, so is the removal of the fence and reinsertion of the fence, is that part of the cost?
That's part of the cost, yes.
So that's not being extra? And as far as the 70 feet high, that would only, if, for example, we have it at another location where, such as where Councilmember Black was talking about, then there wouldn't be any need to change the height if it was already level with...
If it's level with Crest Road?
It's not, it would still require a higher...
Yeah, if it's level with that same, with Crest Road, no height change. If it's below that, we have to bring it up over the residents' homes because it exceeds the female level for decibels that we shot into that area.
Okay, okay, so that's what I thought. The only reason you're putting it and increasing the height is because it was downslope.
Correct, because of the federal requirements for county as well as for the pole.
All right. And there were a problem, I mean, if we decided we want to try to give some notice to the residents so they can actually see where these poles are. Because I know the community association is already doing that with a proposed cell towers so that the residents can get comments and see where they're going to be located. Is that something that you would do to put up there so we have a chance to let the residents see that?
To put a pole in place?
Not a whole pole, but a mock pole, you know, a flag or something.
We could do that with a flag to mark out where the poles are going to go so the community resident can see it. That is not an issue, that will help them.
Are you talking about at the expected height, the flag?
You can't do a 70-foot flag, you could put a lot...
No, we could put probably 20...
Five foot, that's even, that's generous.
We want to give the residents, you know, visuals that they're going to see what they're going, what they're paying for.
Yes, that's what I was trying to find out. So have you done that in the past?
No, we haven't, this is actually the first time that I've heard that request. We've usually gone out and marked it and we haven't had a lot of homeowner associations with that particular request. Our city of paradise was like, just get them up, they're a whole something.
They had a, yeah.
A different situation.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
But we can definitely do that and put them out, survey, you know, survey poles and they can see, the flags on, so they can see.
So how tall are you thinking the flags would be?
Probably 25 feet, because they didn't, any word now, you're looking at getting in the tree line or whatever, power lines.
No, that would be at least half, they can just, okay, just visualize twice the size, yeah. Okay, all right, that's good to know, thank you.
Go ahead.
I feel like, if Jim, can you meet with the HOA there so you can negotiate where this thing goes with everybody? If you say it's okay, I'm totally good with this one. Because I think it's not optimal where it is. If it's any better than this, I'm still good with it.
Yeah, if you go and use that.
No, I know exactly where this is. I know exactly what you're talking about.
And you sit in that view site.
If we can move it and it still works, that's better. But if it doesn't work because there's a giant eucalyptus tree right there in the parking lot and then, I don't know the rules here. I'm just saying is, I don't think we all need to go. One person should go with the HOA, the fact that HOA didn't include us.
I didn't know they even did this.
They had the city staff there.
Yeah, but they don't, they have to work with them, they don't want to pick fights with them. We have, we have very good conversations. I can take a spray can and spray a spot on the...
Seriously, that's how you mark, I can do that.
Yeah? Questions?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to open up to public comments. Come on up, Jim, Jim first.
Do I jump back or...
You can jump back, okay.
Back in height.
Jim, I have the 14th Crest Road West, guess where I live?
Right where they're going to have this guy.
I noticed in there that it said 135 feet from the driveway. And 135 feet is just about where the view site is. And I don't know how they're getting a downhill slope because the view site, if you go to the edge of where it drops off, is out of the 50-foot front easement, unless they got another easement going down through there. There was a road easement through there once from the driveway. It came through where our corral is. And Kathy purchased that back when she purchased her property from the developer before he sold it to Han.
But wouldn't you prefer it closer to the fire department than where this is?
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm just trying to say, is if you put it in the view site, I think all of you are going to have a lot of explaining to do to a lot of other people. And it's going to be a very good target if somebody, not me, but somebody else wants to run against you and say, "Look how they don't care about us." Anyway, just something to think about. And when you put a little stick down there that's on a slope, that's more than 20 feet down the hill, it's only five foot high with all the bushes they have down there. I would suggest you at least put a sign on so we can see actually where the stick is and that it's not just a marker stick from something else. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, Alfred Visco, 15th century, there are a couple comments. Okay, first site's going to be in the city of Rolling Hills Estates. What if the city of Rolling Hills Estates says no? Now where are you going to put it? So the second, the second site at the fire, at the fire department, at the fire station, I thought we were going to approach LA County and ask them if we could put it right next to the fire station. I thought that was one of the big selling points of putting it over there. We could put it right next to the fire station. And I thought that LA County was responsive to that. I didn't hear anything that said that they were opposed to doing that. And I agree with Dr. Black, heck, you got all kinds of stuff over there. And as I recall, my sister who used to be married to a fireman back in the city of Philadelphia, I may have, you may have heard me mention this, all the fire stations, not all the fire stations, but a lot of the fire stations do have the sirens. And that's where they, that's where they shoot them out from. So she was surprised when I mentioned that, gee, doesn't your fire station have that already? And I said, no. So, and then the third item is, I just want to make sure, you know, the association is considering widening, from what I understand, it's going to be on the outside of the gate? It's not going to be on the Rolling Hills side of the gate? It's going to be outside the gate? Is that...
Rolling Hills, what's owned by the Rolling Hills Community Association.
But outside the gate?
It's outside the gate, it's east of the gate.
I just don't want to make, I want to make sure because the association is considering widening that last portion to the Crest Road. Gate from one lane to two lanes. I just want to make sure that we're not planning to put the pole smack in where we might be widening it. But if it's on the other side of the fire gate, that's fine, I mean, it's perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Arlene Honbo, 33, Portuguese Ben Road. My understanding is similar to... Uh, my understanding is, uh, similar to, uh, Mr. Visco's that, uh, when Elaine Jang was here discussing with, um, Assistant Chief Brian Bennett, that the fire department was open to having that, uh, on, on their property. So, um, I also, again, this, you know, these discussions went on for a long time. You know, Brian Bennett is not the major decision maker, I mean, he's not the one who can actually approve it, but he, you know, uh, there was discussions with Brian Bennett, there was discussions with the forestry department, with Trevor Moore, saying that the fire department was open to having it on their property. I thought that there was also some restrictions about putting it on their pole because they have, you know, they, they have requirements and it's a different department. But the bottom line is that the fire department was open to having that pole on their property. So I, I agree with Dr. Black that, you know, we should at least investigate, get, investigate that. So, that's my comment.
Thanks, Arlene, anyone else? All right, back to council.
I didn't have a question of the, Mr. Chris, um, so can you put these poles on buildings or do they have to be fixed in the ground?
Due to the weight of the, the speaker arrays, they will have to be mounted to poles.
In the ground?
Yes.
Okay, so it cannot be an attachment to an existing building?
No, if it was maybe one speaker, two speakers, but this is an array in the size of these speakers to get the coverage that was requested, they, they're, they're large.
Okay, and then the pole that would be on the perimeter just outside the city right here, it's gonna be directed only to Rolling Hills?
Correct, correct.
And the same thing with the, whenever they're facing, because the one at the fire station pretty mu... Well, that one has to have.
That will have several speakers on it, spread out about various angles that provide for the sound propagation. Um, so those will only be angled in towards the city, same with the one outside the gate. Those will be angled towards the city.
All right, and did you do anything like saying we have complaints from our other city neighbors? Have you worked it out so that it doesn't saturate too much into other cities or has that been factored in?
That's been factored in with sound propagation ver, by the vectoring of the speakers. We can control where the sound goes by changing the angle and the pitch of the speakers so you'll get minimal bleed over to the other cities outside the coverage area.
When you say big pole, the diameter, is it like that or is it like that?
It, it depends on the, the height of it.
Seventy foot pole.
Seventy foot pole, I believe, is twenty-eight inches diameter, thirty inches in diameter?
Like that, and then the fifty is a little smaller.
Correct.
They taper?
They do taper going up.
I just wonder.
When you bury it, it'll look like a standard fifty-foot pole. If the, we decide to move forward with the seventy-foot, it'll look like a fifty-foot pole above grade.
Above the, the grade of it.
Yes, and that's just for seismic rating and everything.
I understand.
Anybody else, any other discussion?
Yep.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I, I, I do just, oh, just one thing. I'm, I agree with what my, what the understanding was and Mr. Mr. Trolley says, it doesn't have to affect you. Well, well, ultimately, but, um, that I had not heard that the fire department or the county had said that we could not use the fire station and that that was intrinsic in why that was a location that was chosen. I am fine with, with this, but we do need to, we need to clarify with the fire department or the county why all of a sudden, I was very surprised that the association was involved in this. I didn't know anything about that. And I think we need to go back and make sure that we're looking at the fire department location. And if the county or the fire department says no, that's one thing, but I haven't heard that they've said no.
And if they say no, we can put it right next to their driveway and put a lot of poles.
Yeah, we can look for, for, for a better, you know, for a better location, but...
You can look the street, but there...
But that was one of the reasons they picked that location is we, the association didn't want it in any of their easements. That was the whole thing, they were not supportive of this project. And so we got the one easement on the outside, but everything else that we looked at was gonna be the school, it was gonna be places where it wasn't under the association's purview, so that was, that was important.
I believe the reason why that it's not on the fire department's location anymore because that is county property.
Right, that's what I said, if I hadn't heard that the fire department or the county, I need to have somebody from the county tell me why we can't put it there after all of the stuff that...
They said that we could, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
We, we, we will, we will reach out to them.
Chief Bennett and HQE this week.
That's what I would like to do. This has taken forever. And I'd like to see if we can get started on the project, but hold on this one, uh, at the, at the, um, fire department. Could we approve it so they can start on the city hall and the Crest Gate location?
So...
And then the fire department...
I'd like to answer.
Because I don't want to have to wait another six months, you know?
I'd like to add to that.
Um, we cannot proceed without all the final locations because we have to submit to the permits to LA County to, for, for building and safety.
Uh, I'm sorry, because I don't want, I don't want you to come back and say...
I, I don't mind.
Well...
Get it in and have it for next fire season and, you know...
Yes, um...
Can I ask a question? If for some reasons we still don't have an answer from Rolling Hills Estates, and I don't know exactly how long...
Is that, is that true, John, we don't have an answer from...
Uh, so Rolling Hills Estates, uh, my last communication with them was that they was going through their city attorney. Uh, that was a couple of weeks...
That doesn't mean the city attorney's gonna say yes.
But, uh, but so far, mo, half of our parking lot and where the generator shed is right now is technically the Rolling Hills Estates, uh, property area. And anytime we have had an ask related to anything in that easement, if you will, from them, uh, we have not had any, any issues. So, I'm, I'm not sure what their delay is, but, uh, Pear Tree has definitely sucked up an enormous amount of their staff time from other things, so I will apply some, uh, pressure.
But there are locations, if for some reason they didn't, which I'm not anticipating that they would have a problem with it, but we do own some of the property here is under our purview, not, not theirs.
Correct.
Maybe we could, it wouldn't, it would still be somewhere in this area.
We would have to, uh, their engineer, uh, their civil engineer who's working on the project would have to evaluate...
Right, I understand.
That, you know, because there's also Edison lines that are running, uh, right, uh, adjacent to PV Drive North. Uh, so the, the site that was selected is far enough away from, you know, one of their Edison poles, uh, but still within, uh, our, you know, campus, if you will.
There are other places in, on our campus that could, not that far away that could perhaps be considered.
There are, and, um, only with that, if we decide to move locations, we'll need to have, you know, site drawings so we can identify where plumbing, sewage, all that is, to make sure we avoid those areas. So we'd have to come back out and re-survey the locations.
All right, I'm not sure what we can accomplish tonight with the, the restrictions that we're placing and the limitations.
Could I ask, um, I think we should get this further information myself, but can I ask a question? Is there any danger because PV Drive North, people careen off the road, that it could hit and damage the, the pole because it's adjacent to the roadway?
Uh, that, that's one outside the back gate.
The current location that, uh, that it's proposed, it's up, it's, it's a bank up to our property. So I, that car would have to take a good jump.
That'd be Michael Jackson or something.
No, no, you meant Tiger Woods.
I mean Tiger Woods, sorry.
Wrong celebrity.
Okay, so I would propose that we, you know, table this to get this information. Hopefully we'll have it by the next meeting, um...
We want to approve it, so don't think that we're gonna vote no now, but we really want to get that one pole special.
I, I'm here to answer your questions, Mr. Black, so not an issue. All right, was that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion tables, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trolley.
Sorry, yeah, I wanted to get you going, so...
Hey, uh, next time, let's pay attention to anybody's here to give their lease...
She did.
I, I, I didn't in time, I didn't get it in time.
I thought he was the contractor from...
No, Win, you thought it was Greg Win? Yeah.
All right, thirteen, B, yes. Approve, A, thirteen B, approve a third amendment to the lease agreement with the Rolling Hills Community Association extending the term until December thirty-first, two thousand forty-three.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's before you this evening is the, uh, lease extension uh, that was requested by the association, it's a fifteen-year extension. And, uh, the request came in because, uh, they actually were interested in doing a remodel renovation of the property and asked for some additional time, uh, in essence to amort, amortize, uh, that, that renovation. So it was, the subcommittee was council members Piper and Mayor Wilson uh, in negotiations with two members from the community association. Uh, we did have this discussion in closed session under property negotiations. And what's before you this evening is the final amend, amendment to that agreement. Uh, we just also note that with regard to the fiscal impact, their current lease payment is fifty-seven hundred per month, uh, and that will increase by five percent every five years of this additional time period. Thank you.
Questions for David?
I do have a question, was this, is this different from the last time we saw this?
Uh, it is, there's no changes that I'm aware of.
Had a, a previous amendment, uh, earlier this summer, uh, so this is different, correct.
Previous amendment.
But the last time we, didn't we have it on our agenda not that long ago?
Your October ninth agenda, which was canceled.
Oh, maybe that's why, so...
We talked about it in closed session, we discussed it in closed session.
Oh, got it, okay, but this is the same contract, okay. That's what I wanted to find out, we're talking about, when you say new amendment, we're talking, nothing new since the last time.
Correct.
Public comment? I believe our former mayor would like to say a few words, Gordana.
I'm Gordana Swanson, uh, resident of Rolling Hills, and, uh, you're all very new to me, but, um...
Not to some of us, Gordana.
Only been here for eight years now.
My comment is, as I'm reading the blue newsletter, is that it's to twenty forty-three, forty-three, yes. And I'm thinking, why so long? So many things happen. And I'm sure that you have done a lot of thinking, but as one that has the luxury of not knowing what you have done, I just wanted to know, have you given thought to making it ten years?
So the, the primary...
You don't have to answer.
Uh, but I, I, I would like to, the primary driver for this is, they, they plan some major, um, remodeling to the extent of, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars or something like this. They need the time within their lease to amortize the, the cost. You know, if they only have five years and they put eight hundred thousand dollars into the project and say we kick them out, which is unlikely, but, uh, for, for their record keeping, for their books, for their, for their measures frankly, they need to be able to show in their financials, you know, how, how this money is, is being paid in over one period of time. So that, that's the primary reason.
Thank you for answering.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, I'll bring it back to council.
I'd make a motion that we approve the third amendment to lease agreement with the Rolling Hills Community Association.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Question carries.
Uh, thirteen C, approve amended and restated agreement between Turbo Data Systems and the Palis Verdes Parking Authority, uh, which is Rolling Hills, Rolling Hills Estates and Rancho Palis Verdes to provide parking citation administrative services.
I didn't know we had a joint powers authority for parking tickets. That must have happened before my time.
So, uh, actually, this, uh, a similar item to this came back to you, uh, just, uh, I think within the past two years where you did make some changes.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so this has been around, uh, since, um, nineteen ninety-three, uh, between the three cities. Um, but, uh, the, the most recent, uh, change to the agreement came back because Rolling Hills Estates used to administer, uh, the program for you. And what they realized was, was that Rancho Palis Verdes had far more, uh, parking citation, uh, issues and so it made sense to move, uh, the program over to them. They assumed, uh, that program, uh, I think it was in December of two thousand twenty-one, and so they have done so since. Subsequent to that, uh, DMV has had some issue with the way the agreement is worded because it mentions all three cities. And so what they have asked is that everything be defined under one organization here. And so what you'll see in the agreement basically is changing it from, uh, the, the three cities to, uh, restating it as the Peninsula Parking Authority. And that is really the, the main change in, in this amendment that's, uh, before you tonight to consider. Rancho Palis Verdes approved this, uh, a few weeks ago and, uh, and then on October tenth, uh, Rolling Hills Estates did. So we are the last city to, uh, to take this item up.
Do we have any data on how many parking tickets are written here?
In, in Rolling Hills, uh, about thirty-nine hundred a day. No, um, no, no, I don't, uh, I, I think it's, it's rather rare for citations, uh, parking citations to be issued here. Typically what the sheriff's department does, if somebody complains about somebody being parked on the easement or whatnot, uh, they, they will go and issue a warning, uh, before they issue a citation.
Comes to the traffic commission every once in a while, but, you know...
There has been a, a very rare occasion, at least in the time that I've been here, where a car has been issued warnings and it still hasn't been moved. And I don't know if that's because maybe somebody has been out of town or whatnot, uh, where then a, a citation was issued. But like I said, that, that is extremely rare.
When I see illegal parking all the time and presumably no one ever complains about it, so nothing ever gets done.
I, I have to say it's been well over a year since the last complaint I've taken over the phone here at city hall.
All right, so how's this gonna in fact, impact us directly? Is there, is there some revenue sharing in this?
No, there's, uh, there, there is no, the, the impact, it will not have any impact to what we have already in place. It's really just a name change, uh, to appease, uh, DMV's concerns.
All right, are there questions?
Do you know if we don't issue any parking tickets, is, are we contributing to this even if we have no parking tickets whatsoever? Is there like a base fee to be in there and then you pay X dollars or X percent for each ticket that they process? Because I, I don't recall seeing any charges to us for this, but...
I am not aware of, of any charges and I would have to, if I can get that information for you in the next couple of days, but I'm not aware of any, uh, of us receiving any invoices.
If it, if it's, if you approve it, uh, we will confirm that if there is a charge in there. Uh, the city manager won't sign it till we bring it back, so, uh, effectively...
Yeah, I'd never, I'd never, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to, why, why they even had to be, why we even have to be part of it, but...
And, and if you do, if you do approve this tonight, I don't have it in, uh, the pile of things for the mayor to sign anyways because I'm waiting for the wet signature version from the other two cities to come over.
Mr. John again has something he really wants to say.
I know, I'm, I'm...
I'd love to be sure, because if, if you, if you, if you look at the consideration exhibit, there is a three hundred dollar minimum in basic processing, but that's agreement wide, that's not just for the city. But no, it appears that they just take, you know, a certain percentage of the, of, of, of each citation so that they would only, I would assume, get paid upon issuing a citation.
So we're not paying any portion of the thre, we're not paying any portion of the three hundred program-wide.
I think RPV is paying it.
They're paying all of it, okay.
Confirm, confirm that.
But what if we just dropped out of this?
We have to have the ability to write a ticket even if we never do.
I, I'm, I'm not saying that we wouldn't have you...
If you write one, I would match, so just so you know, we have the ability.
I mean, is there another, is there another way?
No, because the, no one else is processing the tickets right now.
You, you could have a code enforcement officer or you could have a traffic officer, it would be a person or a contract.
And just so you'll know, when I was a volunteer with the sheriff's department, I personally didn't do citations, but I rode with people that did, and they did not cite in the city of Rolling Hills. If somebody complains, it goes to a, you know, somebody, a, um, a deputy or somebody in the sheriff's department who will come and talk to the people or do something before they take any action. But as a rule, they're not citing parking violations in here, and there are a lot of parking violations. I mean, even to them, if you're parked facing the wrong direction on the street, that's a violation. So there's a lot of violations that occur here, yeah, no overnight parking, so...
All right, um, open this up to public comment?
Yeah, that's, that was kind of one, I'm sorry, Alfred Visco fifteenth century. That was kind of like my comment because almost every time I drive to city hall, I see a, a truck with a very large horse trailer parked on the side of Portuguese Ben Road. I can't say every time, but almost every time. I don't know if they stay there all night or they eventually move, but it's certainly dark. Seems to me like something like that would not be something you'd want to have happening. But I don't know how you do it because sheriffs don't patrol at night, I assume.
Um, don't, they're not, you know...
Is it strictly compliance direct or somebody actually has to complain about, quote, improper parking?
We, we always can do selective enforcement, we like chalk the tire, you know, there, and, and, no, seriously, and, and...
To me, you know, to me, parking your, your big giant truck with your big giant horse trailer right off Portuguese Ben Road, you know, it's not on the asphalt, you know, to me, that's dangerous. To me, that's dangerous. I'll complain.
You're not talking about me, are you?
I've just complained, yeah, you. I've just, no, no, I've complained on my way from my house to City Hall.
But. Where you're talking about.
I'll complain.
It's not always there.
I'm just complaining.
I bet, I mean.
No, sorry.
You're registering your complaints?
I'm registering.
Okay, so.
And I would just know, we do have, we do have the ability to request enforcement. So if there are errors we want to enforce, we certainly can do this with this contract.
Can I just say, before we do something like that, and I know, I realize that's not the vote, we can go ahead and vote, but there had been at one point quite a bit of discussion if for fire safety, considering letting horse trailers park roadside so that if they needed to get out, it takes a long time to get your horses out, they wouldn't have to hitch up their rig, which their rig parking is down by the side by their barn, that it does provide X.
We never voted on that.
No, we, no, I. I didn't say we did. I said there had been discussion about considering that.
But we didn't vote on that.
No, we did not.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the amended and restated agreement between Turbo Data Systems and Palos Verdes Parking Authority.
Second.
Go ahead, Jeff.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 13E, consideration of a request from RHCA to execute a license.
You want to go to 13D first?
All right, pass that one, sorry. Approve First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with MB Chang and Associates for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. What's before you this evening, requesting a renewal of the agreement that you've had from, from 2021 with MB Chang for financial services. You know, Finance Director, the, the lead finance consultant and staff is performed by an outside company. A couple of things that are changed in this, and first I need to note the, the increase for the Finance Director, or what we're calling the Finance Operations Lead Consultant. And, and I apologize, what it says is it's a $15 increase, but that is actually a $20 increase from $95 to 115. What I had in the staff report, my air, it said $15 increase, that is a $20 an hour increase. That is a request from MB Chang to bring the Finance Director a little more in line with what other cities are paying their Finance Director, and we have several examples in the staff report. So that is the one major change. The, the second change is, in the original agreement, we actually had a set amount. Obviously, in the last couple of years, the city's requirements have changed. So what we've put in this agreement is that there will be no amount in the contract other than it will be limited by what city council approves in your budget for that line item. So that gives you the flexibility if you want to add or subtract whatever you approve in your budget or supplemental appropriations is the limit. So those are the two changes specifically, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Was this brought by the, by MB Chang?
Yeah, so the agreement had, had terminated. It was not renewed. It needed to be renewed. And so in bringing it, they had requested that the increase for the Finance Director be a part of this.
And are they saying they're not willing to continue services without a $20 increase in Finance Operations Lead Consultants? What are they saying?
Say that. They didn't say they would just cancel the contract. What they said is that the rate here was artificially low from a couple of years ago. And as you've seen the staff report, it's, it's 130 in PVE Palos Verdes Estates, 140 in South Pasadena. So this obviously is a little closer in line with that. My estimation is the Finance Director we have, Robert Samario, is very high quality, very, very good at what he does. By having this, I think we're insured he's going to remain on this portfolio. So I think that would be important for the city. I think, I think actually it's a small price to pay to keep him in charge of your financial operations.
And the way they wrote it is, whatever our budget is, is all they get to spend. So they want, I mean, honestly, if you might be pointing, if you want charges 20% more, just work 20% faster, we're fine. It doesn't matter, it doesn't. If we're going to spend $10,000 a month, which is still more than we were before, which we were told this was a savings, they're low voltage to get in, and now, and now they're creeping their way back up. Yes, they are. We've all done it, this is just how you do it. The question is now, we run, we ran the clock out without having a contract, so now we're, where are we either signing or we fire them without any replacement?
And in all fairness, the, our requirements of what we have been asking from our Finance Director has surpassed what we used to ask for. We got a lot of, we remember when we went back and did the budget this year, and prior to the budget building process, there were a lot of work that was done that we requested that Robert do regarding trying to reconcile our crash records to why doesn't this balance? Why doesn't that balance? And digging deeper when we were trying to look for categories and places that we could more appropriately budget our limited resources, there was a lot of information that was provided, a lot of education to people at a much lower, deeper level understanding of the budget process. So I think a lot of that has hopefully passed and that we have learned and we maybe should need as many hours from him going forward.
Before we continue the discussion, I'd like to open it to public comment. And being none, okay, back to discussion.
We'll just say, we, we did a quick evaluation of costs here since we started the new fiscal year, and they are lower. Now granted, we're not in budget season right now, but they are lower. A lot of the, the higher costs that we have seen in this past year was cleaning up our books, which were really in quite disarray. So I think now that Robert and his team have gotten that more consistently under control, and he meets with staff on quarterly bases to go over budgetary stuff, I think we're much better positioned to keep those costs. Maybe not at what you were quoted back in 2021, but definitely at far lower hourly amounts than, than what we've seen in the past year or so.
I'd make a motion, we approve the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with MB Chang and Associates for Finance Services.
Second. Okay. Can I ask a question before we get to the vote? Who brought up the, the rates for the three cities? Palos Verdes Estates, Madera, I don't even know where that is, and South Pasadena?
Well, it was simple. I said, no, city council doesn't want to pay guys more. They don't want to pay with the pan. So why would we want to pay you more? To set the stage that you've got to convince, you've got to be convincing the city council. You've got to be convincing to me and staff, and then we have to be able to convince the city council. So I said, I need some comparisons. Now, I was at PVE when, when we brought in this, this person. And what, what I can tell you was, I thought that, that was a higher N. I thought that was expensive. However, also went for a time without any Finance Director. You know, you're in that in-between, and that was, I would have paid all the money in the world not to have had to have done that, so to speak, because of the problems it causes. So first they had to convince me, and I said to Robert, to, to your point, are they going to, Robert, you're going to, you know, council likes you, we like you, you're good. Are you just going to leave? He says, no. Ethically, I can't do that, I wouldn't do that. I would be with you for a transition for as long as you need me, but, but at some point, he says, my other job, so for example, he doesn't make 115 where he, or 95 anywhere else that he's working. So he sort of was doing that is because he liked being here, but that's why the request is there.
He likes us?
Yes. So they had to persuade us first, because I knew it was going to be, we needed to persuade council that this was important.
Okay, so, but I mean, did you guys do it any independent to find out what Finance Directors who don't work for MB Chang get?
No.
For comparable cities accounts?
No, I did not. And, and that's a good question, council member, and I'll tell you the reason why. The relationship we have with him and his knowledge of here, if, if we could get, you know, $5 here or there, I don't, I, I don't think it's worth it for the city, for the peace of mind that I think he's going to bring to the financial operations. Because as you know, if we lose that, we lose everything in terms of community trust. So I, I stopped at where I was. Because when I compared the 130 and the 140, and we're still underneath that, I thought this was a good deal.
Already he's doing things differently. When we push back on him, because he tried to raise it before, we're like, you don't have to drive here every single time and sit here and drive here, because you're getting billed all the way around. So we've seen him a lot less at our meetings when it's not necessary. That saves money. There's a whole bunch of things that are going to do that. We've done a whole bunch of things that should have made it easier. His job is to do a good job here and to push the bill in as much as he can. And we put a wall up, and that's where we're at.
And it isn't only Robert that's in the contract. When we get the billing, it isn't him. We are supposed to be in-house processing our own payments here, and we have not gotten our act together to do that. We're continuing, as far as I know, to ask. When I looked at the bills, there's three months' worth of bills for a whole lot of vendors that were there. I think that they're still doing some of our bill processing for it, and I think as we tighten that up here at staff, here in the city, then that will decrease some of these other people that we are using to do those functions that should be in. We've said, when we build the budget, should be in-house.
Well, and, and I would note to, to that point, we do have the vacant, two vacant positions. One of them particularly is for this kind of work. In the transition meeting that we, we had today, staff and myself with, with Karina, you know, that was a, a, a big topic that we discussed, which in terms of the, the organization itself, the positions, what do they need to change, knowing that we've got this bit of a, a situation with finance that needs to be shored up. And final thing, so in Palos Verdes Estates, we went through three temporary, because we kept changing, to try to do better, get it better, and it, it, in the end, it just created much more problems than it solved.
Questions, okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 13F, accept the City Hall heating mental, did we already did that?
No.
Am I skipping it again? Geez, sorry. 13E, consideration of a request from RHCA to execute a license agreement with Cox Business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll be taking care of this one tonight as well. The item before you all is a license agreement between the city and Cox Business. I'm at the request of RHCA for additional equipment for RHCA's internet service from Cox Business. While the city does have some services via Cox Business, none of the contemplated equipment in the license agreement is related to any of the services the city has from Cox Business. Now, the proposed communications facilities license agreement with Cox Business appears to be their kind of template agreement. Myself, Mr. City Clerk, Mr. Intrum City Manager have attempted to reach out to Cox Business to request changes to it. We have been met, stonewalled, saying, hey, see you later. And the kind of the two, you know, and once again, obviously Cox Business is a reputable internet service provider, well, not reputable, but they're, they're one of the, they're one of the.
They have a reputation.
Yeah, they, they have a reputation.
It's substantial.
And, you know, for the most part, it's, it's kind of okay. You know, requires them to have insurance, all that stuff. But the two kind of key things that caused myself heartburn, staff heartburn that necessitated bringing it to you, is first the mutual indemnification provision. I won't get too much into the weeds, but simply state that typically the city would consider it only if we were getting a service, kind of a quid pro quo that, hey, we're going to get a service, so if we as the city screw something up, we'll go ahead and, you know, defend and indemnify them. If they screw up, vice versa. This is a bit different, since in this instance, the city is not receiving any service. And then the second provision that I wanted to note is the term. So it starts with a five-year term, automatic renewal for one-year terms after this. It states that we can terminate within 90 days, prior written notice, all good, except for the provision that says our ability to terminate the license agreement is prohibited at any time during which Cox Business is providing services or has a service agreement in place with any tenant, i.e. RHCA. So basically what that means, as long as they're providing service, we are very, very, you know, you know, where, where'd you end up? It's not going to be very easy. If, if they're causing a problem, we want to get them off the, off the property. It's going to be very, very difficult, if not kind of implausible. So ultimately, the, the license agreement is, is kind of a judgment call for, for you all. Nothing requires, you know, the city to legally, our lease agreement with RHCA does not mandate this. However, in conversations with RHCA that Mr. City Clerk can, can buttress, it does seem to be quite the high priority for them. They've already expressed frustration at the length of time. We've explained to them why. We would like to help them out, but it's, it's, it was, you know, my, my decision as well as Mr. City Clerk's that it's just not something that we as staff could agree to without bringing to you all.
Why aren't we just connecting that little tinny shack to this building that has gig a bit connections?
I offered that to them. They did not respond.
Yeah, our ring.
Because super, super fast, state-of-the-art agreement is not how they want to roll, they want to go with Cox.
I can't speak for the RHCA, but I did mention to them that we have plenty of broadband that we pay for, and.
It would be free.
Yeah.
I have a proposal. Well, like, there's two ways of looking at this, but, you know, since I had an issue with my Cox situation, when the guy that was in charge of this area, I ended up talking to him quite a bit, he's now up in upper management. And so I reached out to him, and I saw this today, earlier today, and he has indicated that, I said, this is an issue, it's a way we can work out the contract. He said, what I would say is we can figure this out, I just need to get our attorney and the VP of Cox Business to engage, working on it ASAP. So we can go that route, see how that, take it down to the next meeting. The alternative is that we have a side agreement with RHCA and saying, since you're getting the service and we are providing it for you as, as the owner of the premises, then you have to indemnify us. If we lose, you lose. And, and if we need to terminate the contract, you have to agree to terminate the contract. And, and that if our side agreement so that solves the issue, because I don't see a reason why we should be stuck and we have no options when, when we're not even getting the service and we're doing it as an accommodation. So I think that would be reasonable. Those are my, that's my Plan A and Plan B.
Okay, but let's, limited to questions right now. Any other questions? Okay, public comment? Please come up. Gordana, I'm sorry, your stuff was at the very end of the meeting.
It's okay. I, I enjoyed listening to you all. And thank you for your service. I think you're so wise how you approach issues. But this thing about Cox, I think I understand what they want. Get their foot in the door. So I, I'm just saying that I trust that you will carefully think about what you're doing about this, and do not ever, ever put us in a position of not having a choice of providers, because in my 55 years in my house here, I can tell you, we did not have a choice at one time. And at that time, it worked, because they were so eager to have business in the city. But then it got worse and worse. So having a choice and competition is essential. And they want to have everything bundled, which means we're getting you much more around your necks so we cannot ever get out of it. So be very careful about this, because choices are important. And I would like to have my choice of providers for everything, for my phone, for my internet. And I hope that you understand that I am now putting this on the record, that I am very much in favor of having given us a choice.
I understand. And just to be clear, this is only, this is limited to service to the association, it's not.
I know, I know, but they sometimes don't let us know what they're doing.
Well, fair enough.
So we just want to be sure that city council has the upper hand about this.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So I have actual personal business experience with this very item, where I had a business tenant who came to me with the same request, the same type, I don't know if it was Cox or not, but the same type of boilerplate form, the same pushback on whether changes could be made or not. And I, I had my attorney reach out to their attorney, and unfortunately, it didn't get resolved because the tenant went bankrupt, but. But I was in the same position, and, and I really don't like that, that indemnity part of it, and I don't like the term, and without the ability to cancel. I mean, B's comment about, you know, a side agreement is, is one way to look at it, but boy, I would really rather, you know, they're the ones that want it so bad. It seems to me they should be, they should be appealing to their, their business department, their, their attorney, somebody that can make a change, because of course they're going to tell you they can't make a change. That's their tried and tested agreement that has the least amount of risk for them, but, you know. I don't think that the association is paying them that much money where it's going to But, you know, I don't think that the association is paying them that much money where it's going to get, you know, the level of attention that we might want. But I think if we push back a little bit more, and especially if they're so urgent. And I really don't understand why they could get superior service for free, why they would be so married to Cox.
Right. We should just both know on this.
And if we have offered them, we're the owner, they're our tenant, we've offered, this is what we would provide you as the owner of the property. You can use this, and it's free.
And it's better.
And, yeah, and it's better. If you don't want that, if you're adamant that you don't want that, can we put something in their lease that would authorize them, in this case, only for this specific issue, for them to be the responsible party? And let them deal with Cox and get us out of it, because I don't want to indemnify them either, and we're already offering them something.
So I would make a motion that we deny the request to execute a license agreement with Cox Business.
And a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so from a purely esoteric legal way, yes, that would be possible. However, if our current discussions with Cox Business is any indication, they're not going to, they're not going to listen to it. They're going to say, who owns the property? City owns the property. They're not really going to look at any type of lease amendment or ability. And so if that was the direction, which that's not the motion on the floor, I would likely direct you back to Councilmember Garringer's idea of having a side agreement. And once again, I have no idea if RHCA would be willing to sign that. But that, to me, would be the path of least resistance if that was it.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, honestly, I totally agree with what you're saying, Jim, but at the same time, I think it's, here's your options. You downify us, or they change it, or use the free. Because we can't...
We got free. We paid, we got it all.
I know.
They shouldn't get a choice. It's free, it's better, it's broadband. This is what you get. It's better and it's free, and we've already paid for it. It's all the same wallet. We talked about it several times.
I'm totally with you.
It's all the same wallet, no matter what building it is.
I think the presentation to them, instead of us saying, we voted no because we have something like this, I think we say is, we can't vote yes because of the indemnification problem. Until that's solved, here's a workaround that should work for you guys.
So do you want to table it, or what do you want to...
No, I just say it is, instead of just...
Well, we could put, next time, I should have an answer from my Cox guy.
I think we say is, we're tabling it because we don't have a workable solution. We know you need this. We still have the free option that's better. Or you're going to have to wait till our legal is happy with their legal, because we need someone to indemnify this, because it's not going to be us.
Because we're inclined to vote no.
Yeah.
And we need to be able to...
And then that pushes them to take what we've already paid for and brought in.
So I think a motion, we table this.
Well, that's fine.
Did you withdraw?
I withdraw my motion and second papers.
All right, thank you.
I already seconded it.
Oh, sorry. Bee seconded. I can be quiet.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Thirteen F, do I get that right? Except City Hall, okay. So thirteen F, can we skip? Did we already do that?
No, no. So this is, this is separate. So now, this is simply, I brought this to you back in August. This is just to accept...
Let me introduce it. Accept the City Hall Heating Ventilation and Air Conditioning Project 2023-01 as complete. File notice of completion and release retention after 30-day lien period to AC Pros.
Correct. So, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This item is coming back to you now. It was brought to you originally in August, and it has been delayed just as a result of the noise issues that we experienced. But really, all this is, is to close out the job formally so that I can send the paperwork to the county for a signature by them and stamped by them and recognize the job as complete.
Okay, questions? Public comment? Back to council.
Make a motion we approve this present.
Second.
Go ahead, Jim.
Choose.
That's okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thirteen G, consider requests from the Peninsula Seniors and the Women's Community Club of Rolling Hills determine fiscal year 2023-2024 contribution amounts for community organizations.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This item is before you tonight. As you know, back during budget season, we made cuts across the board to...
We did not make cuts.
I'm sorry. We, we made...
Made accurate... We did not cut one nickel.
Yes, I...
So don't say we cut.
Sorry. I apologize for that. We adjusted our budgeted amounts for most of our items, including the monies that we put forward to community organizations. Previously, this item...
To what we actually spend.
Well, in this, if I may, in this particular one, you actually did spend what you had allocated on a given year, and actually, a little bit more if you read the report, because there was further donations made to the South Bay Chamber group in previous years, as well as the Peninsula Seniors. With that said, the budget for this year, for this particular item, has been changed to a $10,000 amount. Right now, before you, we have the Peninsula Seniors making a request for $5,000. And then we also have the Women's Club of Rolling Hills making a request with the attached receipts that you will see. And that is usually how we deal with them. They've traditionally gotten about $5,000 approximately, and they about twice a year send us their receipts to help support the many events that they put on. But what we did not discuss at budget time was, with these changes in the budget, what are we going to allocate to the different groups? And so this is before you for two purposes. One, to provide direction to staff as to what you do want to provide to each of the groups. So far, the Tennis Courts Club and the Caballeros have not come to the city with an ask. But these two groups have, and as I state in the...
They're complaining. No, no, they are complaining. When I saw this on here, I figured we're covering all this, because they are, apparently we cut them in half too.
Well, what I'm saying, yes, is that...
I don't know how that...
The budgeted amount has been lowered, but what I'm saying, Councilmember Piper, is that neither of those two groups have approached city staff about their annual contribution.
So with that said, staff is requesting that the council provide direction on what you would like to allocate per each group, and then give us direction specific to the Peninsula Seniors' request and, of course, the Women's Club as a part of that.
All right, questions?
Well, in the past, we gave five to the cab, five to women's, and five to the tennis.
Yes.
And then they would give us the bills and we would...
Only the Women's Club, in the time that I have been with you, has actually sent receipts. I have not seen, from the Caballeros or the Tennis Club, the type of breakdowns that we get from Women's Club.
I thought we only gave them 2,500 bucks. In the past...
As you'll see in the staff report, you have only donated $2,000 a year.
They want an increase.
Yeah, they want 5,000 now.
They want a great big increase.
So we don't have to do it. I think we go back to what we always do, 2,500 bucks for them and five grand for the three that we have here.
Then you have to make a budget.
But we, that would require an amendment to the budget, a budget resolution, and you would have to then, of course, pull monies from reserves to do that, so...
If they actually use it.
Trust me, they'll use every penny.
Well, we should have...
Well, that's what it's for.
Yeah.
I mean, we should have the same standards. I mean, it shouldn't be just the Women's Community Club that presents receipts. I mean, we should have receipts from the Tennis Court, from Caballeros. I mean, the Peninsula Seniors and the other, the Chamber Music Society, that is just a...
There was another one that we gave to the...
A grant.
That's correct.
You gave $600 to the Chamber Music Society.
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, do 600 to Peninsula Seniors, I mean, instead of 2,000.
We usually give them 2,000. They're a good asking.
But I think we tell them to stop giving us this paperwork.
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
The paperwork's a pain for everyone involved. These are literally people who live in this city, that pay taxes, that give us this little bit of money, and we give them a little bit back. To me, just, it's a grant, or whatever we want to say, here's the five grand for that. Because it's not like cab is a whole bunch of different things. Women's club, there's a ton of stuff. They're doing a ton of stuff. Just let them spend the money.
When Pat finishes with the public, we can make a motion.
I think we will.
Okay, public comment?
First of all, yeah, first of all, the Tennis Club and the, also the Caballeros, they get a lot of benefit because you pay money for the tennis courts, you maintain the riding rings and so on. The Women's Club really doesn't have any of that. All we have is a little closet in the association building, and we do do a lot of activities. A big, a big stuff. We have our biggest activity here with snow day for the association. So I would hate to see the Women's Club being shafted out.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Any other public comment? See none. Back to council.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we know if the homeowners association also gives these people money?
They do. How much do they get, by the way?
I think they match the same number.
They, and they match, and in some cases even more. They pay for the snow, which is for the...
Which is a...
Which is a huge amount. It's their very biggest expense, and the association foots the bill for that. Thanks to me, the Grinch, as Mr. Visco calls.
I make a motion, we put them back to what they originally were, which is, I think, five, five, and five for the three here. And then we go back to whatever the original one was on the Peninsula Senior.
Two thousand, you have to remember.
Which is 2,250, whichever it was. And we tell the three groups from here that it is five grand that they get, and we don't want to get paid for it.
Second.
Okay, so just to be clear, that's going to require a budget amendment, right?
Yeah.
Did I hear that? Okay. All right. Which we can do at a later time?
My only recommendation would be, because as I said, the, what I've noticed is the 15,000 covered the three groups, but it didn't cover the Peninsula Seniors and the South Bay Chamber. And since those two groups also seem to be consistently donated to, that whatever the budget amount is, it comes out to include that 600 dollars.
17,000, 600.
Right, whatever.
600 for the, what is it?
Chamber.
Chamber. So you need to add the 600 to the Chamber, you're...
So we would...
600 for the Chamber, so it's all done.
Okay.
Second.
But, okay, and before, before we vote, go ahead, Bee, because I have a question.
No, I just think that we should separate the issue about whether they provide us any reimbursement issues. I mean, because I think, I don't know if it's a legal problem, and for us to give them, just cut them a check and say, do with it whatever you want. And, I mean, it doesn't have to be ornate. Maybe we don't have to give the kind of detail, but at least they should tell us what they're using the money that we know. Is that an issue? It's city money.
Right, so I'm not aware of any legal mandate that we must get receipts. Now, of course, if we were made aware that they were misappropriating, you know, using it for nefarious purposes, which they're not, we would have to take action, because someone could say this is a gift of public funds. However, I'm not aware of, there's not a, when the city gives a grant, there's not a government code that says that you have to have...
I have a suggestion. What many, most cities do is, when you use grants, you just ask for a report of their expenditures. You don't have to have all the paperwork, but just, and then that's shared on the council agenda.
Go for it, Ron. Don't make it too long. One paragraph.
And could I ask for administrative, I'm sorry, no, I yield.
There is a benefit to having some cursory overview or review of the expenditures, because it is taxpayer money, and it can get confusing sometimes. Well, like, gee, I'd like to get this person a birthday gift. They were really special. They did something, and they've been a longtime member of the club, and they've done this. Or this president did a lot of extra work, and we should get them an expensive gift. To me, that isn't appropriate from the Women's Club. And they're not trying to, they're not doing anything nefarious, and they're not trying to misappropriate the funds. But a little bit of oversight, I think, is appropriate and helpful. And as far back as I was involved in being with the treasurer of the Women's Club, that's something that's done, and it helps them plan their, what expenses they have to go for.
Then I'm going to change to add whatever David said.
To request statement of expense.
A statement of expense.
Can I say that? Can you restate the motion?
I...
I'm making a motion that is five grand for cab, five grand for tennis, five grand for the Women's Club, 600 for the...
South Bay Chamber Music.
And 2,000 for the Senior, just like it's always been. And we're going to require a minimum statement of how they spent the money.
And could I ask for clarification? Are you appropriating the dollars in this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, you could.
We will come back.
But, 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 just for efficiency, since it's agendized as this, they could do an amendment to do a supplemental appropriation, because it's not substantially changing. The, could they not, Mr. Attorney?
Right, correct. However, it's been the practice that we bring back the formal budget resolution and amendment at a subsequent meeting. So I'm fine with the action.
That's fine.
We'll do it later.
Okay.
Wasn't there the South Bay Symphony besides the Chamber?
The Peninsula Symphony.
Peninsula Symphony.
There's not, yeah, but that Symphony one, I think we give the 600 dollars to.
No, you also, you made a, you placed an ad in, I think, the Peninsula Symphony's program. I don't know if you would consider it as part of this or an advertisement.
Maybe it was the other way around, because the Peninsula Symphony was Al, the thing that Alan Lay, I'm not sure, but that, that, never mind. Don't worry about it.
They can bring it forward. We don't have to put it now. We got a motion.
We always do those. We got a motion to those.
And just, just for staff certification here, the expenditures, because the mayor pro tem brought up a scenario that led to the previous city manager requesting receipts, because there was some expenditures that she felt were outside of the realm. So just a statement of expenditures that need to be approved by staff, or...
We'll give them guidelines.
Okay.
Upfront.
I just want to...
And ask for a report with guidelines, and then we can match it up. And if we see problems with it going forward, then that will... Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, consider H or G, sorry.
Thirteen H.
Consideration of the City of Redondo Beach Mayor and Council's October 3, 2023, letter requesting support for the Metro Seeline Extension Elevated Hawthorne Alignment.
Thank you. Mayor and council, on Monday, October 9, staff from the City of Redondo Beach reached out and sent over the letter that is in your agenda packet, requesting support of the City of Rolling Hills. They're sending this to all cities in the South Bay. Basically, to, they are requesting that you write a letter of support that is in support of Redondo Beach and Lawndale's decision to go with the Hawthorne Elevated Alternative for the Seeline, which is the Green Line Extension to Torrance. And furthermore, they are asking that that support carry to the South Bay COG level at the Transportation Committee, the Steering Committee, and the Board of Directors meeting for that particular alignment. I will just say, anecdotally, in doing my archive project, I did come across paperwork of prior councils 20, 30 years ago, sending support letters for the building of the Seeline and the ultimate extension with the passage of Measure R. So this council has, throughout the years, taken positions on support of that transit extension into the South Bay. And that's it.
What does the other side say?
What does, which other side?
The organized opposition.
The right-of-way side.
Well, if I'm speaking from personal knowledge, there is opposition to the right-of-way in Lawndale and Redondo Beach, because the right-of-way cuts down in-between housing. You've probably seen some articles in the Daily Breeze recently about gravestones. There's also gas lines along that particular easement. From the metro perspective, Metro already owns rights to use that right-of-way for the line. The Hawthorne Alignment will clearly cost more. It's the most expensive. It will require collaboration with Caltrans, and will require also NEPA evaluation at the federal level from an environmental perspective. So there's a few more hurdles to cross on that one. But the opposition is primarily from residents that live along the affected area for the road.
I, in the COG meetings I attend in other places, I've heard some very emotional arguments against this, and...
Yes.
Well, I'll...
Against the right-of-way.
I'll save my comments for discussion, but is any question from Christian? Okay, then I'll open a public comment. Please, Jim.
Okay, first of all, they said this was supported 40 years ago or something by the City Council here. I'd like to point out, this is not the same surrounding cities as it was 40 years ago. I think all you do are encouraging free transportation, which I believe is what they're still giving for the poor, so everybody can just ride up here anytime they want. I don't think our residents are going to get anything out of it, because I don't know about you, the only people who are going to be using it are going to be probably the elderly here that don't have... it are going to be probably the elderly here that don't have cars, but would you want to put your mother or somebody on one of these things traveling towards downtown? I wouldn't. So I don't think any kind of public transportation should be supported by our city. We don't have any commercial businesses, we're not going to profit off of this. All we're going to do is get an influx of people. They're worried about what they're going to do with their public housing they're building, so they want a way for them to travel out. Uh, I don't think you're going to see all that. I think you're going to see more people traveling in, and I don't think it's necessarily going to be beneficial to our city, if you get my, just, I don't, in other words, I don't think it's supported at all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, back to council, discussion?
I think we just go dead quiet on it.
I do, too.
Until, until every, unless, the only time I think we should sign this thing is if every other city, the entire thing, signs, and we look stupid by not signing. But until then, if we go dead quiet, and we'll talk about it again.
And I could even look stupid if, even if every other city does. There's a lot of times we've said, we're not every other city, so.
This is, uh, like I said, there's a lot of, uh, disagreement, emotional stuff going on here. None of it affects, I don't think, our residents, and I don't think there's anything to be gained from being involved in this.
I make a motion, we table the thing.
Table?
Table, or just receive and file?
Receive and file? That's what we do. Receive and file.
I second that. I do have a question. I agree a hundred percent.
Is anything going to that Torrance thing? What's happening to that Torrance now, for example? They had the big grand opening, they spent all the money, and I've never seen a single person there.
The hub?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if it's been-
The park lot's empty, there's nobody there.
Activated yet, but there's got to be a lot of activity.
All the mucky mucks over there.
There is going to be a lot of activity.
Are these things going to that?
The, the C-line will terminate at, at that location, uh, and that'll also be a bu- so it'll be a bus and, um, and rail terminal.
Because, because he's right, there's been a lot more crime in Long Beach along the rail line, as people have come in, um, and rode the rail to, to rob the area. So, anyway, that is something to think about. So I agree.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Fourteen A, verbal report from the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee for, on the October third meeting, which I missed.
Members of the public and my fellow council members, I am prepared to give this report out, but with the late hour, we did have an almost two-hour-long meeting that covered quite a bit of topics that people would be concerned about. If you would like to table this until a future meeting, I am happy with that. I mean, I'm not asking that because I'm not prepared to do it, I am, but it's up to you guys. I'll do it as fast as I can, but it covered a lot.
Is it going to take a long time, is what you're trying to say?
Several minutes.
Nothing takes several minutes. I mean, not you.
No, I don't take several minutes, you're right, but, I mean, I'll go through it as fast as I possibly can.
Go ahead, go, 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 go.
Okay. Um, we met with Republic Services, their general manager and the municipal services manager, and also in attendance was Christian, uh, interim, interim city manager. Um, the focus of this particular meeting was on service issues, primarily missed pickups and staging locations for the mother trucks. The service problems were unprecedented levels of missed pickups, including multiple and consecutive days misses, starting the week prior to Labor Day. Through numerous communications with Republic's operations manager and supervisor, we understood most of the issues were caused by staffing shortages, illnesses, vacations, recent turnover, retirement, blah, 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 and newer employees not fully trained on the special needs and services for our city. We appreciated that they were working overtime evenings and Wednesdays to try to catch up, but what are they doing to fix the problem? They responded that they had assigned new operations supervisor Miguel Ruiz, who is dedicated to Rolling Hills alone, not sharing with other areas, so can focus more on us. At the city's request, standing meetings with Christian to monitor as well as needed communi- as well as, as needed communications have been established. We shared that Mr. Ruiz has been more responsive than predecessor. Um, they're going to be training more employees to be able to backfill in Rolling Hills, special requirements and procedures require the extra training. We asked them to provide better communication. As soon as they are aware that a route or routes are going to be missed, contact staff to advise and provide information on when to expect the makeup collections to be scheduled so that we can advise residents that call City Hall. Um, they're not using the tarps to cover debris in the scooter bins when driving to the mother truck, which results in extra trash along the roadways, and as a contract stipulation, they will reinforce this with the operations supervisor to train drivers. Reports of newer drivers opening trash bags in household waste, of household waste to retrieve recyclable cans and bottles, resulting in the miscellaneous trash coming out of those bags left on either the residents' properties or along road sides, as well as taking extra time for the drivers. Against, this is against their policies, and they will reinforce with the operations supervisor for training. Um, the committee requested to resume periodic ride-alongs with the scout drivers that were suspended during COVID. I suggested that until service levels are improved and sustained, the exercises should take, take place every two to three months. Republic agreed to reinstate. Previously, I was the only person to participate in this process, but I suggest and encourage any council member or staff personnel could always take my place. It's a very informative use of your time. To get the ball rolling, I will arrange a date in November for the, uh, next ride-along. For staging locations for mother trucks, for several years, Republic has used only two locations to stage all offloading of refuse from the scout collection vehicles to the large mother trucks for the entire city. This puts an unfair burden on residents in those neighborhoods. We realize we have limited options available due to physical requirements of the process. It must be large enough to accommodate the trucks and maneuvers of the scouters, the scout trucks to offload. We have narrow roads, the topography, curvy roads, traffic safety issues, et cetera. But in two thousand nine and two thousand ten, the Traffic Commission recommended and the city council approved several locations to be used for staging, all approved by our traffic safety engineers in Republic Services. The committee believes the disposal of solid waste is a citywide need, and each of us contributes to the tonnage collected at every pickup. As such, all possible staging locations should be used to minimize the inconveniences on any one neighborhood. We suggested they consider all options to alleviate the impact to each area, including rotating entire days between locations, perhaps morning in one, one, one's location in the morning, one in the afternoon, or moving mother truck multiple times per day to reduce travel time spent by the scout trucks. Republic Services reps present were unaware of this list of locations or why only two are being used. They agreed to review, see why other locations are not being used, and come back to us with improved process. We discussed that over the years, Republic and the city may have received complaints from residents regarding noise, smell, trash left around, hazards for horses, et cetera. That may have resulted in some of the approved locations being unofficially removed from the list, but the city needs to be strong in support of the concept that refuse collection for our entire community, especially given our limited options, needs to utilize all approved locations, and Republic needs to do what it can to minimize the inconveniences posed by the staging locations, including thorough cleanup of trash generated by the offloading process, noise, and odor. Regarding odor, they have all converted their mother trucks and scouts to the cleaner burning, cleaner burning fuels to reduce odors. We realize that this is much more, there is much more traffic flow now than when the last locations were approved, Amazon, Uber, food delivery services, et cetera. We may need to reassess the existing approved locations in the future, but for right now, we, we ask that they reduce the amount of time spent on current locations, especially George F. We also offer to put them in touch with a logistics company recommended by a resident that might be able to help them improve efficiency on their routes. We also shared a list of FAQs from city to Republic's general manager in two, twenty eighteen regarding operations, and suggested it might be helpful for all of us, for them to review and provide updated responses or additional questions they may want to include. They agreed. Overall, I thought the meeting went well, and I was encouraged that they seemed to genuinely be interested and motivated to remedy service problems and look at utilizing all staged locations. Republic has provided us with unique and dependable service for many years, and have been a good partner with whom we wish to work to overcome these, what we hope are only temporary rough spots. That being said, some service conditions are unacceptable, and corrective actions must be taken, not just discussed, and, and we discussed that. To, to that end, we are in the process of scheduling a follow-up meeting to evaluate progress, still receiving missed collection reports, though not as widespread or as frequent, and no action to this point has been taken on mother truck staging locations. Was that fast enough?
That was really good, and well worth the five minutes.
Thank you. Hey, 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 thank you, thank you.
Any questions? Next?
That was great.
Oh, my gosh, there's a question.
Well, no questions from council members?
No.
Okay, public comment.
Jim Eickley again. Um, I looked at this on the agenda, and I thought this was also including the fact that the contract was, I know you can't comment on it because you're whatever, possible lawsuit or whatever, but I'd just like to make sure that you are still pursuing this, because it's-
We have, we have not forgotten that, Jim. The reason that this meeting, you know, we need to keep the lights on and the business running. We have people that were not getting trash collection, and so this focused purposely only on those two things, and we have not forgotten the others, and Republic is aware that we have not forgotten the others.
Okay, that's, um, that's why I didn't ask it earlier in the open agenda part, because I thought this was included, because I saw the committee was on it. But, anyway, that's only, my only concern about it. I, you actually, that was a very good and quick job of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee views?
Just get out of my way and let me do it.
Public comment?
That was it. Anybody else?
Did you have a comment, Visco? Oh, he didn't?
Mayor, um, our calls for service to City Hall are declining, so-
Oh, wow, that's good.
That, that is, I think, a key metric to, to note, uh, since Miguel has taken over, so.
Great. If I could figure out, if they do a good job, they get tipped, they might do a better job.
And they-
I think the new set just doesn't know, there's another currency that happens underneath it all when they do a better job.
And they just, they just don't know some, some of the, the things yet, and some of the things that they could have done in other locations may have been, been okay, but we're, we're on it, it's not being dropped.
Can I get a motion of receiving file?
I would move it, receiving file.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, fourteen B, reconsideration of the recent decision to hold a December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting.
What about the fire, what did I miss?
What?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm paying, trying to pay attention. Fourteen B, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll read it again. Reconsideration of the recent decision to hold a December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, Councilmember Derringer.
Yes, so, um, with regard to this particular event that we scheduled, um, I did not realize, if, if I had the information even at that time when we scheduled this, that we had the, um, the, the League event, which is also combined with Contract Cities and Independent Cities, it's an annual thing, this exact same night in downtown LA. And I found out pretty much when Brett Huff, you know, said, wanted to come to our reorganization, but she said, you know, that I, I'm, you know, the same night as the League event, so I just said, yeah, it would be nice if we could have other, uh, elected officials who would like to come, and be able to be there. So, um, I would like very much to, to be at both places myself, uh, since I have to be there as the president, um, for that party. Um, there's other options that I have available, and I was hoping that we could work on some other dates in December, so that we wouldn't have, uh, that conflict.
Do we even need the meeting?
Whoa.
Rotation.
Reorganization.
You can't, don't, don't you guys see what happens when we miss a meeting, when we don't have a meeting? Ten o'clock, and we, we're not, you know?
And, uh, if I, if I may, just, I, in the report, since the report was written, Senator Allen's office has also RSVP'd for the thirteenth, just so you're aware.
We have, uh, a number of elected officials that have already RSVP'd for that night, so.
To come here?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, um, I mean, it's, it's ahead of time enough that, obviously, we could, we could send out another notice, they probably still have areas that are free, but there's, um, the twelve-four, twelve-six, twelve-twelve, twelve-fourteen, twelve-eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
They may, were for you, but not for some, some of us.
Yeah, exactly, and obviously, I'm putting that out there, you know, for discussion.
I would prefer to keep it the same, the date that we've already chosen.
Because we went through a lot to get to this date.
We just asked, there was like a, I think, a discussion on, um, end of September, a meeting, and we originally were going to do the twelfth, and then I think Pat said it didn't work out for him or something, but-
Correct.
But-
So that's when we instantly came up with the thirteenth.
Well-
I didn't know there was a conflict at the time either, um, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, because I can't be, you know, if it's the thirteenth, and I want to be here at my council meeting.
Okay. Um, public comment? Okay, anyone? Conflict with any of your schedules? Back to council.
I would say we look at one or two other dates, and that's it. And just to quickly, take a quick look. We appreciate all that you do with the other organizations that you go to, and we all have to make decisions about what we can do, and we're not picking on you, it's just that we get to this time of the year especially, it's really hard on calendars.
Because of the, the response that we've already got from people planning on making this, I'd like to make a motion that we keep the date that we, that we chose on the thirteenth.
I'd like to talk about some other dates.
That we have, in December, we have a Christmas party on the eleventh, and then two days later, we have a full city council meeting with-
Yes, taking the-
On my schedule.
Take, taking the place of what would normally happen on the eleventh.
Okay.
So that hopefully, we won't have to have the one in December, the tentative one. So you're going to have, but, right now, we're looking at open house and two council meetings, one we hope doesn't have to come, have to happen. But I'll, I'll bet you it does.
Did my motion fail?
Uh, you did not receive a second.
What was the motion?
The motion was to keep the thirteenth.
B, what day do you want?
Um, either twelve-four, twelve-six, twelve-twelve, twelve-fourteen, twelve-eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
One, one or two dates.
Okay, so, you know, so we can do the week bef- if it's the week before, it's twelve-four, twelve-six. If it's the same week, it's, uh, twelve-twelve and twelve-fourteen.
Well, we already couldn't do twelve-twelve, so-
Oh, okay.
We know, that was why we went to the thirteen. What's the other one?
Well, anytime the week after, I mean.
Or the fourth or the sixth.
Or the fourth or sixth.
The meeting is, we're literally just going to rearrange, which we already know what's about to happen there.
I don't know that we know that, but I'm, I'm not here on twelve-four or twelve-six.
Oh, you're not here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that, I mean, I'm-
Okay, okay, sorry.
You're important.
You're, yes, you're important, so, okay. So then, what about fourteenth or any week, um, the week thereafter?
Twelve-fourteen, you're looking at, huh?
Yeah.
I can do the fourteenth. You're very smart.
Not really. I-
Yes, no, what?
I can do it, I'll do it. I'll make work.
I, I, I'm, I'm okay with either the thirteenth or the fourteenth, whatever people want.
You said the thirteenth or fourteenth?
He already scheduled the thirteenth.
The existing, yeah.
And then the fourteenth also, if B can't make it the thirteenth, fourteenth is fine. I would-
Fourteenth is good.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate the, the audience support, yeah.
Well, and, does, honestly, does Ben Allen ever show up? Doesn't he always send some guy named Allen or something like that, and then Alan Marisucci sends a dude that looks whatever, and then?
That is correct, because if I was-
That's correct. The only, the only, the only elected official, uh, at, at a higher level, not city, is Supervisor Han will be-
Yeah, she usually comes, yeah.
Is scheduled to come on the thirteenth.
She comes every, everything. I, I think she must be cloned, she is everywhere.
Yes, yes, but I'm sure she would come on the fourteenth as well, you know?
Otherwise, they never come, and then some staffer who's getting paid probably double time to sit here, which is a total waste of taxpayer money.
So can I make a motion that we do it on twelve-fourteen, uh, twenty twenty-three?
Leah, that's okay?
Self-serve counsel.
Leah?
I mean, I, I am available, but I think Pat might have a restriction on that date.
No, I don't care.
I'm looking over his, over his shoulder of his phone.
I'm good.
You're good the fourteenth? I would second that, then.
Great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, change to the fourteenth.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, um, matters from staff, receiving file, fire, fuel abatement, and code enforcement quarterly report for the third quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
Members of the city councils, this item is a report out of the activities of code enforcement, um, and particularly, it's, uh, in regards to fire, fuel, abate- fire fuel abatement. It's for the period of July first through September thirtieth. During that period, there were ten cases closed, ten opened, and ten cases that continue to be open, ongoing. Out of those, two of them dealt with dead vegetation, dead trees or vegetation. Those were closed. Six were opened, and we're currently dealing with five of those that are still currently open for vegetation and dead trees. The city code enforcement officer has been working on four animal complaints during the period June sixth and October fifth, both taking a lot of time.
Any repeats on those?
Details?
Any repeats on those four?
Yes, there was one, actually, that was a, I guess, repeat.
So three animals, then? Four reports, three animals?
I want to say, yeah, yeah.
Well, I didn't understand what I'm, it said dog out. Dogs are allowed to be out here. There's no leash law.
There is no leash law, correct.
So why is this a thing? They're complaining someone's dog is-
On the loose.
On the loose. That's okay.
Well, I guess in certain cases, some of these charge at people walking by.
It's an aggressive behavior. Is that what it was? Or is it just loose?
I understand that. I, I guess at some points, they, they do sort of attack the dog or even the owner, and sometimes the leash is wrapped around.
Aggressive behavior, not on the loose, then. Is that, would that be better?
Does our code enforcement officer know that we don't have leash law here?
Yes.
Okay.
And on that same issue, can I have, I have a question, John. I know we don't have a leash law, but I thought a dog was supposed to be under your control or supervision, that it, that it just can't roam.
They absolutely can. We have dogs coming visiting all the time.
Well, I know that you, I know that we all have that. I'm not sure that that means that they can. If someone doesn't want their dog, somebody else's dog, on their property, that they can-
Throw rock at it.
I don't know. I think no leash law does not mean that the dogs don't have to be within your control.
I think it does.
David, you have something else? Are you researching?
Well, I was, nothing that I found lately off of this conversation.
Paul, because I, I, I talked to Susan, I think was her name. The dog was acting aggressive, was sort of charging her and her other do-, her dog, and, and so it was sort of-
Aggressive behavior.
Aggressive behavior.
Aggressive, not-
Not loose dog, yeah.
That's, that's aggressive. They're not-
Let's change that.
We did receive one report where, I guess, the dog was, was loose and, I guess, defecating on another person's property, and that person complained. And so our officers are sort of obligated to go out there and-
Yeah, I don't know if that's a violation either.
There is a section in our code about nuisance and, you know, having to pick up after your dog.
Yeah, well, no.
Now, you don't have to pick up after your dog.
That was the very first issue I got when I was on the city council.
Yeah.
Got a call right away. Someone's dog took a dump on the neighbor's lawn.
Well, horses can do it.
There is not a requirement to pick up after your, your dog.
All right, so we're receiving a five?
Receiving five.
Whoa, 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 whoa. There's lots of public comment on this one.
Okay, sorry. I thought you was going, you know, with that easy, didn't you?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions here. On one of them here, it says thirteen Portuguese Ben Road, it says dead tree alongside Blackwater Trail. And then there's one on Two Chuck Wagon, it says a dead tree along the street. And there's one on the next group down, oops, can turn that off. It says a dead tree near the street on Two Chuck Wagon. If these are in the easement, are you guys citing the association? Because they are responsible for the trees in the easement.
Well, I think they would-
They are responsible, and they're responsible for the ones on the trail.
That's correct. Yeah, if they're on the trail, they reach out to the association.
And they're in the street easement, they are responsible for those trees. They've taken down some already.
The one on, the description on Chuck Wagon Road says near the street, so it's not quite on the street though.
What do you consider the street? Most people consider the pavement. The street is actually like on Crest Road. It's fifty feet from the center of the street. I mean, there may be growth there, but the city, the association is responsible for the trees on these, these locations. That's why I'm saying it's, I think you may be talking to the wrong person. Now, what they've done before with the association, if they have a dead tree in the easement that's on the street or the trails, they don't want to get into taking down trees belonging to people if they're, if they're alive. But the dead ones they take down, the ones that are alive, that are leaning, or they feel that's not safe, they approach the property owner and tell them if they want to keep that tree and be totally liable for it. You know, they're welcome to sign off, that they will be totally liable for the tree that-
Dead vegetation right now, so I, I understand your comment, and I think that's something you may, John, you may need to reach out to the association and have that discussion with them.
They'll do it for live trees, even they'll take them down.
Yeah, we're not asking that.
I know, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying they are responsible, because they've actually done it. And the ones that aren't dead, that they give the people the option if they feel they're a hazard.
And if foreleaf may not realize that there's this issue about if the tree is in the easement, they may not realize that, although-
They're not going to know the difference between a ten-foot easement and a fifty-foot easement either.
Right, but if it, if it's near the street, it's worth for them to check and see if it's an easement and, and find out. And I do believe that the association, if we have an ordinance, which we do on dead trees, they should be responsible for that. So there, there's big issues going on about side and rear easements, and I'm not going to discuss that. But this is a dead tree, and if it's in the easement, we need to be communicating with foreleaf to make sure if it's, where it's located on the property, if it's easement, if it's easement or not, and then letting the association know that we hold them accountable to the same ordinance.
Yeah. I, I do know the association does go on the trails, and they do maintain the trails in there. Our officer has also gone out on a ride with Artie to go through the trails, and sometimes it's hard to determine where a tree is located in some of those trails. It's hard to tell if it's on the RHDA easement or, you know, on private property.
Um, and the trails, I, I get that, and it really is hard. I'm talking about on a roadside easement. That's the one thing they've accepted responsibility for on those, on maintenance. And they are the owners and controllers of those properties. And it's not that difficult to tell. Maybe eyeballing, it's very difficult to tell, but you can look at the plans, and you can find out where the easement is, the roadside easement.
Okay. Brad?
Yeah, Alfred Disco Fifteenth Century. I noticed in the staff report, Rancho Albujo mentioned, and, and the vacant lot on Ranchero, and that's, as we know, that's Seven Ranchero. A few years ago, I, I know, I, I know you guys get a lot of letters from me, but-
We remember the letters, Brad.
But I, I did bring this issue of Seven Ranchero up, wrote up both to the association and the city, and we did get some movement on that from, from the county, but you all remember, the county's only concerned about two hundred feet from the structure, but you folks, again, have your dead vegetation ordinance, as long as it's not more than fifty feet. Uh, fifty, excuse me, fifty percent slope. So there are areas of Seven Ranchero, although they might be difficult to get to. They are not greater than fifty percent slope. So in addition to the county, Conrad, who I've had a couple of conversations with about Seven Ranchero, about, in addition to the county ag department, weights and measurements going out there, your code enforcement folks should be also looking at this, especially where the slope is not greater than fifty percent, and there's dead vegetation. The other thing that's an issue with this particular parcel is within fifty feet of the bottom of the canyon. I know the former owner did apply to fish and wildlife about getting down into an area down there closer to the so-called stream bed, and fish and wildlife did not respond to the time required, so whatever, whatever he had proposed to them was approved. And I know the county, Conrad in particular, had made a point about the fact that there was a dangerous condition close to the bottom of the canyon, and that's why the former owner initiated an application to fish and wildlife concerning this. If you guys have for some reason eliminated all that from your files, I have it all, because I made a, a information request, and I have it, all that information back through February of twenty twenty. The only reason I stopped pursuing this with both you folks and the association was I thought we were going to get some FEMA money. I thought this was going to take care of that. So if we don't jump on this, once again, we're going to be this very dangerous situation in Paintbrush Canyon is going to remain in existence again and continue. And it's even worse now, because we had all those rains. We have even more vegetation down there, and, and I can't see how much of it's dead. And we have acacias down there, and we all know that there's dead vegetation inside the acacias. And, and so Paintbrush Canyon has grown over the last couple of years primarily because of this rain, and the former owner stopped doing work down there. He was supposed to do it every year, but he didn't, okay? So he had promised, but he hasn't. And the only reason I haven't been bringing it up was I kept expecting the FEMA money was going to come in, and we're going to get this thing taken care of. So now I'm back on it. I don't know when we're going to get the FEMA money. I don't care anymore. I want, I want the city to enforce their code, the code. I want the county to enforce whatever they can, they can enforce down there. And I'm going to be bringing it up with the association, because I believe they have some responsibility also, although they refuse to recognize it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, I believe this is a receiving file.
Make a motion to receive file.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would ask, you know, I, we went through the matters of council. I had a very brief issue I wanted to ask and bring up that might be reflected on another agenda, if I could.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Were you open matters of council? Because we, we didn't ask, do we have anybody else have any matters of council? Went right into matters of staff.
You're right.
Okay, so my issue is this. I just recently found out on Sa-, Friday, that Fernando Barrera, who was our guy for the coyotes, has retired. And there's been a real uptick of coyotes in our area, and Jim will say that's true. They're, they're quite active. And just Saturday, my next door neighbor, Dan, just told me that he had it all on videotape where there was five coyotes, came into his backyard, his cat was mistakenly outside, and they chased the cat, cornered it, and attacked it, and then, then five of them carted, you know, walked off with the cat. And it's all on videotape, right in his backyard. So it's, it's really gotten bad. They're just being much more aggressive. So my question is, I don't know who has replaced Fernando, but I think maybe we could put on the agenda to discuss whether, I think he is, from what I understand from John, and maybe, because you know too, that he's willing to do some freelance. He's very good at what he does, but maybe we go back to a possibility of having a second person also do it, who really knows what he's doing. We know he's, he's a good, but I just want to put that on the agendas for consideration, because it has gotten pretty bad.
Could we put it on with the words animal control update?
Yes.
Instead of the other words we might have used?
Yes.
It'll bring less people.
I didn't know he retired.
Yes.
He did, about three weeks ago.
That's why the coyotes have gotten so terrible.
No, no, they're not that smart to know that he's retired.
Well, they've got, but they're just, no one says they don't do anything.
No, 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 the county still has coverage, doesn't it?
Yeah, they-
So we have a contract for between twenty and-
Twenty-five thousand dollars with agricultural weights and measures, and they charge us when they come out. But we had a, a very detailed staff meeting with them, and they only come out to trap or kill when it is aggressive to humans, so not aggressive to cats or dogs. Just, and, and so we, we gained a lot of clarity on what, what is really covered. And now Fernando has started his own business, and he did come in the other day with his, his packet. And so we can bring back an item for, to kind of discuss what you want to do, maybe leading into the next budgetary season.
Because, yeah, no one's been admired at all. That's extreme.
I know, that's why. And he's very good at what he does, and without him, we need to grab him before other people grab him.
Yeah. I, I, I can say, from his perspective, I don't believe he has been a hundred percent replaced within weights and measures yet. And if so, you know, he understood the peninsula, which is why all three cities had kind of that side agreement with him for the educational aspect. I, I'm not sure if the service level will be, what, what we have come to be accustomed with over the years.
Can he still shoot?
Uh, he still, as a, as a private entity, you know, if he was contracted with, he would still be able to shoot, trap, and not just coyotes, but ground squirrels, you know, all rotted type.
Just like those other-
Guys, the, the other trap that we had when we had, I mean, he has his license to do that.
Either coyotes or just more and more whole.
Why don't we, hold on a second. So one, we gotta just, the, the county has their guy, and it'll, who knows what's going to happen there. I think we should just say is when people call in, we're like, just like Will, right? Hey, we have the county, they're going to come out, it's going to go at the speed it's going to go out. And there's also a private service, which is the old guy. He has his own thing, here's a number. Because I don't know if we have to necessarily be like, hey, let's, don't put all this money toward this thing and that. Let, because, like, we get raccoons. As soon as they start working up, they cost me, I think they're seventy-five bucks each, and it works perfect. Like, the guy comes, I pay him to put the traps out, and then the raccoons disappear, the skunks disappear, and then the traps disappear.
I was going to put-
Come back to kind of-
Getting outside.
Okay, what I'm saying is, with that said, is we should bring this back, but we should be offering it to the people. If, if Dan has a problem with the coyotes, Dan can afford to pay for the coyote guy to come and solve the coyote problem.
So we'll agenda.
And if I could note, what might be helpful illustrative for the discussion, but on, on the agenda, in your payments now, isn't the LA weights and measures, isn't that what we?
Yes.
So, so that, that payment for August was five thousand dollars. So, again, so-
Doesn't, doesn't weights and measures also do the inspections on, like Ranchero?
The unimproved lots.
Yeah, improved lots.
If, if you look in your, in your receipts there, you will see that that was all for animal control.
Which is coyotes then?
Uh, primarily coyote.
That was last month, maybe. That was, uh-
That's Fernando.
David, was that, you were the date or last month?
Well, that was for, that was for August.
Oh, so that was-
That was from-
About, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we're-
Three weeks ago.
Kind of, let's see.
All right, okay, let's get back to it. There was, no, we don't-
We need a motion to agendize.
Okay.
I would, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to agendize a conversation regarding animal control.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, receiving file, a report on the planning commission and traffic commission terms expiring.
P B, right?
Review and approve the twenty twenty-three holiday open house final guest list, provide direction on purchase of an artificial Christmas tree.
You, Mayor and council members, it is tradition here in the city to bring forward to you the annual open house list for your approval and/or your revisions, additions. So that is before you tonight. And then also, back in January, there was discussion here amongst you all related to the Christmas tree cost from last year. So I made it a point to bring that back and get direction from you as to whether you would prefer that we purchase a, a fake Christmas tree, or that we continue to go with a, a live tree that has been treated, you know, for fire prevention measures. So, I'm sorry?
Do we have anywhere to store the fake tree?
Yes, we have, we have a lot more room, I, as a result of doing our archiving project, and I've done a lot of cleaning.
Elaine's, Elaine's office, there's tons of room in there. He's only here a couple days a week.
For Christian.
Yeah.
Um, well, for the proposed list, I was, I think it should be number twenty-five. We have captain's powers, but we're going to be getting another captain soon, I believe, and so by- And so by December, we'll have another captain. So I think we should probably say whoever the current captain is and all the personnel. And then 53 Fernando Barrera would have to be retired, retired wildlife specialist. And I think Connie Turner, 61, is also retired.
Is out on medical leave. I don't know that she has officially retired.
Okay.
Mike, go first.
And, oh, and the other thing is that do we wish to add maybe the independent cities association president, which is this year, Richard Montgomery, who's the Manhattan Beach mayor?
No.
Not about anybody specific, but on several of these items it said, and staff. Is that the way we normally?
This is, I pretty much am using templates from each year and then I just go through and update it with new individuals in certain offices or elected officials who have rotated, so.
Well, for example, 42 Mr. Greg Grammar, city manager of Rolling Hills Estates, and staff. I mean, I don't think a lot of people come when it's included staff, but
I will say, at least in the two holiday open houses I have attended, the city managers have popped by for a little bit, but not usually staff.
Patrick Donegan and staff?
I can assure you there will be no staff coming from the city attorney's office unless I can get Mike Jenkins.
I was saying, Mike isn't included in this list.
I would like to add Mike. Yeah, we should add Mike.
So we should
We should also add Elaine. See Elaine's line?
She's a, I say we keep no staff.
I see retired city manager.
You have retired city managers Cruz, Dolebrook and Jang in her current role as
And then public comment, Mr. Mayor. Before we get you down the road.
I'm sorry, public comment. Everybody care about our Christmas guest list?
Pretty long.
I love the numbering system. I don't know how you do it. Super impressive.
Most of them don't show up. I mean, a lot of them don't show up.
That's true.
Okay.
Where is Elaine? She's in She's in number 44.
44.
Oh, she's just not at the end. Okay, sorry.
All right, any other comments or additions?
Do you want to hear the staff things?
Do we, I mean, do
No, because it's not abused.
Okay.
I think we should probably separately designate the, all the city council members from our peninsula cities rather than just going the mayor and other council members since we know who they are and we all have relationships with them for, just for the peninsula cities.
How do we get invited to theirs?
It's usually addressed to the mayor and city council.
That's just, wow.
Fine.
Good enough.
Okay, fine. And then the tree? Because those trees are getting outrageously expensive.
Yes, I would move that we get an artificial tree. Did we agree to add Mike?
Yes.
Jenkins? Okay.
I'd second that.
We're getting a fake tree?
Yeah, I'd second.
Can't you get it someplace else? I mean, actually Armstrong's is the most expensive place that you can get it, number one. The association sends Artie down to get their tree and I'm sure theirs has to be fire, I would think theirs would have to be fire treated as well. I've seen him down for a couple of years and he gets beautiful trees at, I forget where that was, at Lowe's or I think it was Home Depot.
Well, if someone's willing to do it, but it's a pain in the ass to go down there and set it up. I don't want our staff. Did Artie do it for us?
I get mine at the YMCA and they deliver. The YMCA here in the Peninsula Center. And I get a 14-foot tall tree, so I don't think that's Yes.
And is it, is as much as these ones here?
How many are these?
Thousand bucks.
The Armstrong one, I want to say last year was total, so it's about a 200 to 250 charge for the fire retardant on the tree. So I think it came out to around $700. And, you know, I don't know, Connie had always handled the solicitation of stuff, so.
And they're beautiful.
Yeah.
They're beautiful, but it's way too much.
With the retardant, it could be that much.
It smells so nice in here.
Well, you can spray some
She doesn't want fake tree. It's too expensive. If someone go to Home Depot and do it, that's great. But I mean, it's a pain in the ass and I'm not going to do it because I hate doing it just for my
I'm happy to
You could do it.
I can, that's the problem. I have a truck.
I'll wash it for you.
I'm happy to source out if, you know, if you have recommendations. I just wrote down the YMCA and I can look. I'm sure Home Depot offers delivery or Lowe's does as well if you request it.
I don't know if they do.
But I don't know about the, whether they fire, do the fire retardant. So, and I will talk to Artie as well.
Yeah, I think it may be, I mean, cost productive, you know, for us. Every year to be putting out for a live tree that you have to throw and have the public pick up, you know, and
It's gotten too expensive.
It is really expensive. This is a dumb question probably, but are the phony trees fire retardant? Yes.
They melt?
Uh.
But if they get hot enough, if there's a fire and they get hot enough, that's why they don't want stuff around your five feet perimeter around your house because they say your patio furniture will melt and ignite when it gets that hot.
They're supposed to be better than a Christmas tree.
At fire, more fire.
They're more fireproof and resistant than a Christmas tree.
Kid who grew up with fake trees my whole life.
Yeah, not me.
So I make a motion that Christian finds us a good looking one that we can use for multiple years. Because there's some really bad ones.
Get that Balsam Woods or whatever it is. It's really good. They're beautiful. They are beautiful.
But they have a sale once a year.
All right, we have a motion.
A motion and a second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Who is the motion maker and who is the seconder?
It is
One of us.
So I think I made a motion.
I seconded.
There we go.
And that was to get an appropriate fake Christmas tree?
Yes.
Okay.
All the favor please say aye.
I oppose, no.
Yeah, you're a no. Yes, got it.
Yes, you did. So it can be noted. You want a real tree?
For what?
You want a real tree? You say no. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, where did we leave off?
15C. Planning Commission, Traffic Commission, 15C.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to introduce it.
It's been introduced.
Okay. All right, yes, we're going to do 15C, receiving file report on the planning commission and traffic commission terms expiring on January 1st, 2024. What is she doing? Because
We're going to keep moving.
She'd already done it, but she did it again, so.
He asked me, he said, go ahead and do it, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Briefly, this is to report out that there are terms expiring on the planning commission and traffic commission, two each. So on the planning commission, you have Sean Cardenas and Chair Brad Shelf expiring on January 1st. And on the traffic commission, you have Dr. Val Magueta, Vieda Virtue.
When does my term expire?
Probably next year or the year. You don't have an expiration date.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, attachment one is really a schedule for the recruitment and appointment process. Well, we've already advertised out in the newsletter on that and I believe we actually have one in already. But we'll get those, we'll schedule it for the last week of November for the personnel committee, for them to consider those and then bring it back to city council at the last meeting in December. Meeting in December, whatever date that might be. And so we are in the process of doing that.
Have you already reached out to the existing committee members whose terms are expiring?
We have, well, I brought it up at planning commission. I don't, we'll send out the email out to those folks.
Okay, so you haven't?
No, no, well
Well, I'm just curious.
Yeah, the two traffic commissioners, we'll have to call them because
Got it, okay. Is that a receive and file?
Public comment.
Sorry, public comment. Okay, receive and file.
And then we just need the personnel committee to, I'll connect with you guys to find a date that works.
And who's that?
That is council member Derenger and Piper.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion and a second, receive and file. All the favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. And there isn't anybody left.
Well.
I wanted to recognize and thank David Reddy for his service for us as an interim city manager. Usually
This is the last day?
And, no, but it's the ninth, right? November 9th is the last day. And we've had various discussions about how we feel about when you get an interim city manager. Some of them do absolutely nothing. Some of them will actually go all the way to just do no harm. But since David has been here, he has thrown himself into the work here just as he did, I'm sure, for 20 years as a city manager. He has helped in so many difficult issues as if he were always going to be here with always our best interest in heart. He's been an incredible sounding board. He's resolved a lot of issues with our residents and we really got a gem with him. And I'm very appreciative for everything that you did for us while you've been here.
Kindly, thank you everyone.
And I also like to say, the nicest compliment I think that I got on our behalf is that he called our council low maintenance.
Well, I appreciate it and I will miss, I will miss all the, I will miss the staff. It's been a great experience. Thank you. Thank you kindly.
I really appreciate you. Yeah, I had a lot of good insights and always available, you know, what can I do?
Actually did at work.
Yay, Jim, I'm coming from Jim. Coming from Jim, that's quite a compliment. That's quite a compliment.
I'm not joking, by the way.
You know, to make a believer at Jim here, you know, he was like, ah.
That feels incredibly grateful for your insight.
Thank you.
So now we will recess to close session.
10:41, right, Christian?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, John. Sorry, I guess I should have reminded you earlier.
I'm so sorry because I was going so
I'm so sorry because I was going so fast.
I'm gonna take this city out.
It just turned.
I'm gonna make all my students take the city. One of them will finally do.
Mr. Mayor, the City Council recessed into closed session at 10:41 PM pursuant to the two items listed on the agenda. The City Council reconvened into open session at 11:16 PM and no reportable action was taken.